Call this meeting ordered. The invocation is going to be done by Reverend Dr. Patricia Freeman from St. Phillips AME Church.
Good afternoon, everyone. Let us bow our heads and meditate for one moment. God, the creator of heaven and earth and all of humanity, we thank you for this opportunity to call upon you and your people for a meeting such as this. We thank you for each and every one who is here today. You have blessed us with supportive leaders who seek the welfare of your people and their community. Now, Father God, we ask that God will impart thy wisdom unto them and that they may be a blessing to each and every one of us that's here and to those that they serve. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Freeman.
Best allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its Republican, for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty, hope, rectitude, and justice for all.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Or does anyone have anything?
Chair, I make a motion we approve the consent agenda as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pass. Five vote. Okay, the, um... Consideration of National Men's Health Month proclamation?
Mr. Chairman, I'll read the proclamation. Men's Health Month proclamation, whereas New Hanover County encourages citizens to increase awareness of the importance of a healthy lifestyle, regular exercise, and medical checkups, and to participate in preventative health practices and early detection efforts, and whereas despite advances in medical technology and research, North Carolina men continue to live an average of six years less than women, with African, American Indian and African-American men having lower life expectancies, and whereas educating the public and our healthcare providers about the importance of a healthy lifestyle and early detection of male health problems can help to reduce the rates of mortality from disease, and whereas men who are educated about the value of preventative health to prolong their lifespan and support their role as productive family members are more likely to participate in health screenings, and whereas Men's Health Month will focus on a broad range of men's health issues, including heart disease, mental health, and diabetes, as well as prostate, testicular, and colon cancers, and whereas Men's Health Month is an opportunity to raise awareness, advocate resources, and promote access to education about men's health, and now therefore be proclaimed by the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners that June 2023 will be recognized as Men's Health Month in New Hanover County, adopted this fifth day of June 2023 by Chair William E. Rabinbarn.
Do we have a motion?
Chairman, I make a motion we approve the proclamation as read.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Donna?
Thank you, Commissioners, for recognizing June as Men's Health Month in New Hanover County. As Vice Chair Pierce mentioned, there is a difference in lifespan between the men and women in North Carolina, and this proclamation helps us to raise awareness, encourage health education, and possibly reduce the disparities in those numbers. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Donna, Donna, Donna. Number 10 is Pride Month proclamation. Whereas the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners recognizes and proclaims the month of June 2023 as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Queer LGBTQ Pride Month throughout New Hanover County, and whereas New Hanover County observes Pride Month to honor the history of the LGBTQ liberation movement and to support the rights of all citizens to experience equity, equality, and freedom from discrimination, and whereas all human beings are born free and equal in dignity and rights, LGBTQ individuals have had a measurable impact to the cultural, civic, and economic success of this country, and whereas New Hanover County is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equality for LGBTQ people here in our diverse community, and whereas while society at large increasingly supports LGBTQ equality, it is essential to acknowledge that the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice, and whereas this nation was founded on the principle that every individual has infinite dignity and worth, and New Hanover County calls upon the people of this community to embrace this principle and work to eliminate prejudice everywhere it exists, and whereas celebrating Pride Month influences awareness and provides support and advocacy for New Hanover County's LGBTQ community, and is an opportunity to take action and engage in dialogue to strengthen alliances, build acceptance, and to advance equal rights. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners that the month of June 2022, 23 will be recognized as Pride Month in New Hanover County in support of LGBTQ community, adopted this fifth day of June 2023.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approve the proclamation as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm Antonice Sostata with the, uh, on the board of LGBTQ Center.
I'm Takesha McIntyre on the board of LGBTQ Center.
Hi, I'm Shelley O'Rourke. I'm also a board member of the LGBTQ Center. Uh, we have a number of supporters and staff with us, um, wanting to thank you very much for this proclamation. It means a lot to our community. Uh, the center is a 501(c)(3) where we serve LGBTQ elders, youth, and everyone in between. Uh, we also educate the public at large on LGBTQ issues and creating safe spaces for our community. So, this is a step making, uh, the county a better, safer place for our community, and we appreciate it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Travis?
Yes, thank you. On behalf of the Office of Diversity and Equity, sorry, a little tall, on behalf of the Office of Diversity and Equity, I want to thank you, Commissioners, for, um, accepting this proclamation.
Thank you. Y'all need to get your picture, mate. Hold on a sec. Number 11 is the 2023 Annual Community Child Protection Team Report. We have the Honorable, is that Batman?
It is Batman. And who better to be here? Uh, thanks, it's always great to be with you, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. Uh, you know, what a great day to live in New Hanover County, North Carolina. Um, I'm here as chair of the Community Child Protection Team meeting today. Uh, I'd like to start by asking members of our committee who happen to be here on other business or are here to hear this report, uh, to please stand up. There are several of them here. Thank you. So, this group exists as a matter of law to identify gaps and barriers to, uh, the needs of children in our community. Uh, we span 20 different agencies, had 22 meetings last year between a monthly review committee meeting and our quarterly, uh, Community Child Protection Team meeting, and I'm required by law as chair to come before you once a year and make, make this report. I want to start, and I'll, I'll mention that written report is in your materials along with our recommendations for five members to be approved by you. That's the only actionable item connected to this report. We'll start just by reviewing, uh, some of the accomplishments that, um, that we've seen in the last year. Uh, you know, education is so important on so many fronts, and as we're seeking to educate our community about the issues connected to child neglect and abuse, um, that's a big win for our committee when we can really get out and do that education. So, training was provided to Sexual Assault Response Team, New Hanover County Foster Parent Association, Smart Start, New Hanover Schools, Student Support Services folks, UNCW Nursing Students and Counselors, Health and Human Services School, Mental Health Therapists, and Coastal Horizons on how to recognize, respond, and report child abuse and neglect. This is now also offered to all New Hanover County employees, and as an outsider to county government but an insider to government, y'all are the gold standard for the training you offer to your employees, and I just want to point that out. We did monthly Community Child Protection, uh, Team, um, meetings to review 11 complex child welfare cases, trying to identify gaps and barriers to, uh, services for welfare-involved families. Uh, partners were provided with a number of different presentations at our quarterly meetings, trying to keep our, uh, community partners that are members of this team informed on, on what's out there, what's going on. Uh, and then, um, we conducted some additional, uh, education and media campaign on infant safe sleep. You know, safe sleep is a, is a hot button issue for me because I, in the child welfare work that I do, I, I cringe when babies die. It's awful enough when babies die from horrific childhood inju-, uh, illnesses or accidents, but no baby should ever die because of a safe sleep issue, not one ever. And one of the, the, the wins I'll say for last year is that even though we lost some babies to safe sleep issue, none were because of impaired parents, which is a big deal. That has been one of the areas that we've struggled with, but none of, none of these were because of, of impaired parents who were so impaired that they rolled over on their baby. Uh, there are other issues connected to it, but think that that's, we, that's, that's a win, and one of the things that the manager has asked us to do as we come each year is to point out some areas where we've seen some success, and that's a, that's huge because that's, that has been a significant issue for us. So, looking at the different categories of barriers, um, the categories, categories haven't changed. Some things within the categories have changed, but the categories themselves have not. So, lack of consistent, accessible, effective mental health and developmental disability services continue to be an issue. Let me start without taking a breath by saying hooray for Medicaid expansion, and thank you for your advocacy as county leaders, uh, for that Medicaid expansion. That's a win for North Carolinians. It's a win for so many families in my caseload, uh, and I think we'll see improvements, but there's still work to be done, um, including difficulty accessing inpatient treatment for stabilization, uh, including difficulty accessing therapeutic placements and psychiatric residential treatment within our catchment area, our Trillium catchment area, um, in general for, for all children and then for chan- transgender, transgender youth in particular. Um, there continue to be some limitations for coverage by both Medicaid and private insurance, even in the advent of Medicaid expansion. Um, there continues to be limited accessible services for caregivers and children with eating disorders and co-occurring mental health and developmental disabilities. Do you know how hard it is to connect a child with an eating disorder to, to care? It's a monstrous undertaking, and that's, that's even with government involved trying to help for families who are out there trying to do it on their own, it's a monstrous undertaking. And then depending on how medication expansion rolls out, our parents have lost their Medicaid when their kids come into care, which is a barrier for them obtaining the services that they need so desperately to work towards reunification for their children. So, as in most of our categories, there's, there's not a vote that, that the five of you can take that will necessarily fix these things, but there are areas where in your contact with other governmental entities representing New Hanover County, you can advocate for change. So, you can advocate for expansion of private insurance coverage for mental health services. You know, um, when you, when you, when you've got a significant mental health issue and you go to your doctor and you find out that, that here's your deductible for every meeting, and then there's a limit of 10 sessions, and it doesn't matter how sick you are, come on. The idea is for our community to be healthy, uh, and if they've got insurance to have that insurance provide for the care they need to be healthy. You can continue to advocate for improved Trillium oversight of Medicaid providers to ensure quality of services. Uh, I know Commissioner Zappel sits on the, uh, the Trillium Board. I know that y'all have regular contact with Trillium. We want the providers to be quality providers, whether they're paid privately or with public funds like Medicaid, we want them to provide quality services for our family and children. You can encourage private providers to expand capacity of therapeutic placements for children, including transgender youth, and to encourage community members to become licensed foster parents. You know, our, our foster numbers have been down of late. Um, you know, earlier in my career, I sometimes felt like there was a billboard, and earlier in my career it was on 421 because we didn't have I-40, um, but a billboard said, "Welcome to New Hanover County, we'll take your children," because we had so many kids in care, and that's better now. But we still have more kids in care that can be served in our, in our foster homes. Um, uh, and so that continues to be a need. DSS trains foster parents, works with foster parents. It's a noble undertaking to be a foster parent, and so, uh, we would encourage those who are interested to sign up, get trained, and welcome children into their homes. You can advocate for local youth crisis facility for assessment and stabilization to prevent youth from inappropriately lingering in emergency rooms pending placement or stabilization. You know, several years ago, the involuntary commitment law had to change because kids were staying in our hospital emergency department with handcuffed to a bed who needed inpatient psychiatric treatment, but instead of getting that inpatient psychiatric treatment, they were handcuffed to a bed in the emergency department because there was no placement available. Law changed to require that, I think it's after seven days, that process has to start over again, but there's still inadequate placements, and that's advocacy that you can do as a board. Then you can advocate to increase the number of local youth mental health providers who accept Medicaid. So, many of our families don't have insurance, private insurance, they have Medicaid, but limited number of providers who will accept Medicaid. So, moving to children impacted by parental substance misuse, this continues to be a significant issue in our community. Y'all know that as well as anybody. You just helped open a 200-bed residential treatment facility, which is approaching being full, right? What better evidence of the need for that? It continues to be a significant issue in the caseload of the families that I serve, and it's a prevalent contributor factor in, in maltreatment resulting in neglected and unsupervised children, substance-affected newborns. If you've never seen a video of a neonatal, neonatal abstinence syndrome baby, I've got one I'll share with you. It's, it's horrific what, what the babies actually have to go through. Children ingesting improperly-stored medications and illegal substances that aren't even stored. How horrible is it that I have to order drug testing for toddlers who have gotten cocaine or heroin on their fingers and put it in their mouth? What do kids do? They put their fingers in their mouth, right? And it's just laying around. That's horrific, that's a significant issue. Criminal activity in, in the households and parental incarceration, and then we have parents dying because of overdoses. So, you can advocate for legislation mandating improved oversight of medication providers and effective assessment and treatment services. Now, there's some progress that's been made here, but there's been a shift in our, in our, um, in our population and care where we have more parents that are abusing non-prescription medication or prescription medications that's not prescribed to them, whereas before we had a significant issue with parents abusing prescription medication that was theirs. And that was in some of our clinics that provide, um, medication-assisted treatment. I'm not talking about our partner providers that we all know and love and work with, um, but some of the other clinics that, that don't have as strong a regimen of holistic approach to recovery as some of our partners do, still need that kind of regulation out there. You can advocate for expanded capacity for family residential treatment. That's not a 28-day program, but you guys know about that because as a board, this county helped to get Tides started. That's what we're talking about. I, I continue to communicate with Skip Johnstone, Dr. Skip Johnstone, who started Tides, and I texted him earlier today, I said, "Skip, we had another success story out of Tides last week. Mom's successful in her stay there, reunified custody restored to her child." And by the way, I'm going to the commission, I'm going to talk about you.
Jay, tell them what Tides is.
Sure, so Tides is a family residential, uh, uh, treatment facility. Uh, New Hanover County, uh, provided the, uh, the startup funding for that program. Um, it's semi-independent living, but it's supervised living in apartments provided by the program, no cost to the participant, and they can stay for up to 12 to 18 months, excuse me, where they're monitored in their, uh, in their recovery, uh, monitored in terms of their, making sure they're doing their parenting classes, interacting with their DSS caseworker, supervised living that enables that mom and that baby to be together, instead of having to try to figure out how mom and baby can visit each other or share parenting time when, when mom's not living with baby. And the success that we can achieve when mom and child are together is significantly higher than when they can't be. Thank you so much, Robin. So, right now in Wilmington, we've got Tides, you know, and y'all are familiar with Mary Kelly and Kelly House, but I had a mom go to Greenville last week because there wasn't a place here. They were at capacity. So, that continues to be a need, and that's something that you can advocate for, and if opportunities come up, then that's something you could look at, um, adding additional funding for. And then you can advocate for expanded Medicaid and private insurance coverage to include childcare and transportation to treatment. Housing, housing continues to be a, an issue. You know, I, I, uh, heard a report at Rotary last week from City Planning Board that we're at 90% capacity in, in apartments. I mean, it feels, feels like there's an apartment complex going up on every corner. That's not, that's not exactly accurate, but, but because they're so near capacity, the rates are up, right? That's, that's economics. When they're full, it costs more. If they're empty, it costs less. But we've got a service industry that makes our county work, and we have working poor in our county that includes all kinds of, of folks that, that need to be able to live in the community where they work. We want them to be able to live in the community where they work, and that's tough. I talked to a dad a couple of weeks ago who was able to reunify with his two boys, and the rent he's paying to live in an old house on Marstella Street approaches my mortgage payment. And that's where I sit there and I'm kind of like, "You're kidding me," right? He's managing somehow. We worry about the sustainability of that, but he ought to be able, he's working. He's working full-time, and he ought to be able to live with his two kids. We shouldn't be raising his kids. He's been a great dad. He's gotten it back together again. Mom passed away. Housing continues to be an issue, um, and it, you know, and it forces all kinds of things that we wish wouldn't happen to happen, uh, families who, who end up living in unsafe places where they know it's not safe. Can you imagine as a parent being forced to choose to live in a place where you knew your children were at risk? I can't, I can't, but I talk to people who do make those decisions, or where multiple families are having to live in the same residence, or there's unsafe sleeping environments for infants, or they're living in tents or cars. Yes, that still happens here. Families, not talking about the folks, um, that are in our adult homeless population experiencing housing insecurity, I'm talking about families that are living in tents and cars. And then lack of critical access, access to critical resources, um, such as food in our community continues to be an issue. Things that you can, you can do and you can advocate for, uh, you can continue to fund community agencies to develop, uh, innovative housing initiatives and solutions that meet the needs of our population, including our working poor, and I'll add to that, you can continue to work in your partnership with the city, which you are already doing, uh, to, to continue to strategically plan how we can deal with this housing crisis. Early on, and I think you even included it in, in, uh, at least the early discussions of Project Grace, if I'm not mistaken, but designated a percentage of new residential units to be financially accessible to lower-wage earners. That's something you can require as part of, of permitting and, and zoning, so, uh, that's a, that's a thought. I think you've done that some, I'd encourage you to continue to look at that. You can advocate for increased federal housing subsidies and expansion of USDA-eligible zones to increase homeownership and ensure that all residential areas have access to critical resources, and of course, you've already got a plan for the north side for, uh, new grocery, uh, going in up there. Service barriers continue to exist for undocumented families. There's lots of discussion about undocumented families, about our border, about immigration. Our Community Child Protection Team is focused on the kids that are here, and kids who aren't getting adequate medical care and dental care and mental health treatment, kids who don't have adequate housing or who aren't getting adequate education, and so we urge you to advocate and ensure that the basic needs of all children are met regardless of citizenship through your advocacy at both the state and local level. That concludes, uh, my report. I'll ask you to act on the, uh, request to approve the five, uh, board members, uh, that are in your discretion. I'll also be happy to answer any questions. Commissioner Barfield, thank you, you're a lifesaver.
Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the five nominees that were brought forward on the slate before us.
Oh, Commissioners, Mr. Chair, Judge Corbin, there's four names in the report, are we missing one?
If there are four names in the report, then it's four names.
Thank you, sir.
I'll amend my motion. Four names that are on the slate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Judge.
All right, thank you very much.
All righty. Public hearing on the 2023-2024 recommended budget. Mr. Eric Cradle?
Mr. Chairman, we do not have a staff presentation prepared. Um, as we discussed at agenda review to this point, the hearing would be around the recommended budget, and then staff is prepared to take whatever instruction the board has ready.
Mr. Chairman, uh, um, just a matter of, of point of process here, is this an open public hearing for the public, uh, to make comments about their proposed budget? It is, yeah. Oh. Well, it, would it be appropriate to make a motion for the budget at this time?
Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 158.7.1, the board is required to hold a public hearing to receive comments on appropriations and expenditures for economic development. The source of funding for these appropriations?
Mr. Chair, that's for 13. We need you to go back to item 12.
Okay, pursuant to North Carolina Statute 159-12B, before adopting the budget ordinance, the board shall hold a public hearing at which time any persons who wish to be heard on the budget may appear. The budget hearing on a four-year 2023-2024 recommended budget meets these requirements. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The board will now hear public comments. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes to provide their remarks. First is New Hanover County Schools.
Hi, good afternoon.
Hello?
Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak with you today. We sincerely appreciate that. We wanted to share, I know you guys have received our budget recommendation for next year. So we just wanted to, in this setting, just share that that included for our operating budget a $3.3 million increase compared to this school year. And that increase is going to go to fund local raises, employee benefits for those local employees, along with a step increase for our certified local supplement scale, so year of experience step increase. We also had some rate increases for insurance and some utility costs that are included in that $3.3 million. And that, anything you want to add related to the operating budget? Okay, and the capital request included a $10 million increase compared to this current school fiscal year. That increase was a large part in reference to some large capital renovation projects that we had. But that increase also included things for our technology equipment. That amount was about $438,000. That technology is for network storage solutions, Mac mini servers, and also to be able to implement esports in Hanover County schools as an actual sport. Right now, it's a club. And the cost of that equipment to implement that is $165,000. And also included an increase of $128,000 approximately to replace some old outdated monitors. The capital request also had replacement of damaged and worn furniture and equipment. So custodial supplies, I'm sorry, custodial equipment, furniture replacement for Holly Tree Media Center, school furniture replacement at Eaton Elementary, Cottington, and also a little reserve set aside for student enrollment. We wanted to see where the kids were going to show up, where perhaps we needed some additional furniture there for those children. So we've got that set aside until we identify the locations where that's needed. And the large increase on the repairs and renovations, that increase of about $10 million, I believe you guys received a listing of those projects, but I'll be glad to talk through any of those. And Mr. Anderson is here as well to talk through any of those capital projects.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir. In regards to the $3 million for raises, exactly what employees would that cover? I know that a couple of years ago, we increased the supplement for teachers to make them the highest paid in the state. I'm not sure if that's still the same or not, but that's something I know is baked into our budget now. And then prior to that, we'd also allocated resources, I want to say a million and a half, $2 million for bonuses during the December timeframe for school employees as well. And just want to know exactly what does the $3 million cover that for the teacher assistance or just general staff?
Yeah, so that $3.3 million actually covers all of our locally paid employees. It's about a 4% raise is included in that calculation along with increases in retirement and hospitalization. And that's estimates based on what we're expecting the state to do. We'd like to be able to provide the same raise and employee benefits to our locally paid employees that would match what the state requires. So that's a large part. That makes up about $1.9 million of that $3.3 million. Then $820,000 is related to rate increases for utilities and for insurance. And then the remaining $496,000 approximately is related to charter school expected growth that we would need to fund them per general statute.
So I'd assume that the local employees are those that the county funds above what the state mandates. And for those that are listening and watching that are here today, you know, the state sets the number of personnel for the school system. And our board of commissioners for the past many years, in my opinion, have been quite generous in terms of funding our public schools. And I think we're probably 600-plus positions beyond what the state recommends for our school system, which means that we have a very healthy school system when it comes to employees. And so the local employees are those that are funded by the county. The state employees that are recommended, they get those bonuses from the state automatically, but it's up to the local government to cover the delta or the difference between what the state employees are getting and what the county locally paid employees are getting. And just want to let folks know that, you know, the role from the county government standpoint is indeed to fund schools. And we're definitely a partner with them. We've been getting some emails this past week saying that some classes, I think art classes or music classes or something, were going to be cut. And just want to make it clear to folks that from a county commission standpoint, we fund the schools, but we don't operate the schools. We don't tell them what to do, what classes to operate, what to allocate in terms of teachers. They have an elected board that makes those decisions. We fund them, but we really have not much authority over what they do with those resources. So when you have questions about staffing, about classes, about classes being reduced, you cannot copy us but copy the school board members because that's really under their jurisdiction and not ours. I like reading the emails, but I can't tell the school board what to do with their personnel.
On that subject, Dr. Faust, you responded to at least one of those emails and pushed back on some of those assertions saying that the school board had not made such a recommendation and you had not made such a recommendation. Is that correct?
Correct. And so what we've done is I've sent those questions and concerns also to the principal. And so the principal has reached out to those individuals and put it in an update into their principal's newsletter for them.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Thank you. I'd just like to join in with Commissioner Barfield's thoughts about the funding. Another component in this that can be frustrating sometimes is if the state decides to increase the pay of the ones that they fund at a higher rate than what we do here at the county. It's our responsibility. We have no choice but to reach back into our coffers and match that as well. So another little piece of this whole puzzle.
And we're to come back to you and ask for a budget amendment.
I'm sure, Charles, yes.
Thank you. Do I have any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Morton?
Good afternoon. I just want to use my three minutes just to thank you. First, I'd like to express my gratitude for your continued support of KFEU Community College. Chairman Barfield, Commissioner Barfield, thank you for your leadership as a board trustee member. I'd like to thank the county manager and his staff for the continued support throughout the year. And really appreciate and thank you for the recent acquisition of 319 North Third Street. This investment will vastly improve our ability to meet the demand of healthcare workers in our region. Additional space will allow us to continue to grow our programs and have a direct impact on the health and prosperity of the community for years to come. New Hanover County has provided capital funding to assist projects related to the maintenance of our aging buildings. These upgrades allow our students to study in an environment that fosters learning and innovation. Your investment in KFEU Community College has helped us accomplish so much over the past year. Enrollment numbers continue to increase. We have bucked the trend of falling enrollment that so many colleges have experienced over the past few years. Our success has been acknowledged nationally by the Lumina Foundation, inviting KFEU to participate in a panel conference in Washington, DC to discuss how we were able to overcome a declining national enrollment which has been occurring over the last few years. This year, KFEU also received a National Marketing Award for social media. We currently have the most followers of any community college in North Carolina and several different platforms, and are a national leader with our social media. We continue to partner with our local employers to develop and adapt programming to meet their needs. In fact, we launched 12 new economic and workforce development programs since June of 2022, including distribution warehousing and fiber optic technician. Additional funding and short-term workforce training goes a long way towards supporting students who truly typically don't have access to financial aid. KFEU's apprenticeship programs continue to grow, allowing employers to develop a pipeline of skilled workers. We have over 80 apprenticeship employer partners in automotive, diesel, electrical, electrical line worker, fire alarm service technician, HVAC, and plumbing and pipe fitting trades, among others. We continue to extend beyond, reach beyond college-age students to engage our younger students and promote career exploration. This summer, we'll host approximately 300 students from middle schools for our Career Academy Summer Program, which is free for them to attend and even provides transportation, meals, and snacks. This list could literally go on for hours, but I want to leave you with this thought. Your investment in KFEU Community College has literally changed the economic landscape of our region. It provides true upper mobility and makes New Hanover County a better place to live and work. So I just want to thank you for your support. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Law, did you want to speak?
Thank you, Commissioners, for having me, and thank you for setting aside precious county funds every year for outside agency funding, especially the capital improvements, the capacity building dollars that were awarded earlier in the year. That's pretty rare these days for counties to set aside money like that. So I'm really grateful to be part of New Hanover County and partnering with the county all these years on affordable housing preservation. You received an email from me last week. You're welcome. It was about four attachments and several paragraphs where we had requested an appeal of the committee's decision about the eligibility of our funding. Now, I made my case in the email. I'm not here to talk about the details of that. I'm here to, because it identified a larger issue I wanted to bring forward. And over the years, the committee has become more and more reluctant to fund some of the critical infrastructure costs of nonprofits. And those include, you know, administrative staff, insurance premiums, things that we don't have a choice. We have to spend money on this infrastructure to get any of our work done. And WARM has administered millions of dollars in New Hanover County from state and federal sources. So these government contracts offer very little reimbursement for a lot of those infrastructure costs, caseworking, financial reporting, equipment. And so we really rely on funds from local government, fundraising events, of philanthropy to help us attract that money. In 2022, for example, for every dollar that the county gave WARM in the outside agency funding, WARM spent $30 in the county on preserving the affordable housing that we have here that is owner-occupied and it's already working. And we want to hold on to those situations that are already working. It's expensive to build new, and it's a lot more economical to preserve what we already have. So considering the importance of affordable housing, I hope you'll see that WARM and a lot of our nonprofits in the region are investments. So $1 and getting $30, that's a pretty great investment. I don't know of a lot of other investments where you can get that kind of return. And so I hope you'll reconsider the committee's decision in this cycle and take a look at the criteria that the committee is using to determine what funds are eligible. Because I think there's a lot of room for nonprofits to grow and make a bigger difference in this community with the kind of support of flexible funds. I thank you again for my time, for your time. And thanks for all you do to make New Hanover County a great place to live.
Anyone got questions? Thank you, Ms. Law. Is there anyone else that wanted to speak? Okay. If not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
This public hearing is now closed.
I make the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. There still is an ask for a public hearing on economic development?
Want to do that now?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I think once you've had both hearings and closed those, then the board is in position to discuss and debate.
Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 158.7.1, the board is required to hold a public hearing to receive comments and appropriations and expenditures for economic development. The source of funding for these appropriations and expenditures will be from the general fund. The purposes of economic development and economic incentive agreements are to increase the population, taxable property, agricultural industries, employment, industrial output, or business prospects for New Hanover County. The economic development expenditures that follow have been recommended for appropriations in the 2023-24 budget. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The public is invited to comment on the following appropriations and expenditures shown on the screen. Economic development agencies and organizations and previously approved contractual incentive payments. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes to provide their remarks. Is anyone who wants to speak? Okay. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed. Okay.
Mr. Chair, if it's appropriate, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the 2023-24 New Hanover County budget to include a one-half cent reduction in the property tax as per the information that was distributed to the Commissioners earlier today.
I second that motion.
I'd like to have some discussion. Is this the budget that we received earlier with the proposed cuts that you guys talked about?
That's correct, yeah.
So, well, I'll just say my piece first then. I just want to commend you all for working on this budget and everything that we've done. But I have to say that I think the growth in New Hanover County has been huge. We've had 16% growth this year from $508 to $590 million. And I initially thought to myself it would not be very hard for us to come out with a $5 million tax cut out of $590 million. I know we're at a half cent. I really wanted to see that one cent. You know, mainly because there's just a lot going on in our society. I know that we have certain things that we have to provide for in our budget, but we're looking at rising costs of food and gas in people's homes and mortgage rates and insurance. And I felt like to give back $5 million to the taxpayers out of $590 million was putting money back in their pockets in their households. And so, you know, I really was pushing more for that one cent cut, which doesn't seem like a whole lot in the whole scheme of things. But I've struggled with this budget. It's my first budget in the county. And I'm just concerned about our society and the income and the money that our folks have at home that are paying into the system. So that's just where I'm at with it. I was looking for more of a one-cent tax decrease.
Mr. Chair, if I can respond, I'm not responding against. I think that, you know, as we've dug into it, I know we've all put in a lot of time and effort, and thank you to the staff, Eric and Chris. The... We're seeing a lot of that, you know, $590 million is represented by additional funds that have come into the county. The enormous increase in sales tax that we've had that, you know, will flatten out, we know. We've seen signs of that. It'll come down. Also, the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA money that has come in and COVID funds that have all, I hate to say artificially inflated that number. But I know that those programs and those hires that we've made as a result of that will come to an end next year. And I think that at this time next year, there'll be a correction, if you want to call it that, but it'd be a different budget for sure without the money. But it'd be a different budget, for sure, without the money. The key indicator for me is taking a look at the core government services. And that cost alone has not increased at all. So it, or, excuse me, it's extremely modest and well within the, you know, price of inflation. So that's what gave me comfort in looking at this. I agree with you that a sales, property tax cut is appropriate. And I think that the quarter cent really does represent that.
Half cent.
It is, excuse me, half cent. Thank you, Commissioner Skelis. Half cent is good and sends a very strong message that we are watching our money here at the county.
Mr. Chairman of our bill?
I know we had a really robust conversation this past Thursday at our general review. For the last several years now, I have not had a call from anyone saying, I want you to reduce my tax rate. I've had folks calling and saying we want services. We want pickleball courts. We want teachers' pay to be increased. We want to make sure that our teacher assistants are getting the right pay. We want to make sure that county employees are covered. We want to make sure that our parks are adequate and staff. And those are the kind of questions that I get. We get requests from the business community wanting tax incentives to bring jobs to our community. Those are the kind of questions that I get. And I recognize that, you know, having grown up in this community, that people come here, and people come here by the droves, and they expect a certain quality of life and amenities. They expect to have robust parks and gardens. They expect to have a great library system. For me, it's amazing to see how many citizens that live in Brunswick County will spend thirty dollars a year to have a library card for our libraries because Brunswick County doesn't offer the services in terms of eBooks and those kind of things that our community offers. How many people come here and utilize the services that we have because they're not in the surround, surrounding counties? I see so many buses from other counties that use our parks because their parks aren't as robust and as nice as our parks with amenities for their children to come in and play on. You know, I reckon, recognize that our community has grown. When I see sales tax numbers continue to outdo what we've budgeted for, it lets me know that our county is not a hurting county. Folks are out here spending money left and right all the time. If you ride by the point, you ride by any grocery store, you ride by any mall complex, you see cars, cars, and cars. And I recognize that folks in this community have the wealth and resources to spend. And so I've not heard again from folks saying, I want you to give me back anything other than I want you to provide the right services that we are used to when we come here from New York and Connecticut and New Jersey and Ohio and Raleigh and those major metro cities and communities where they have those types of things. I know we had a great discussion last year about public transportation and providing a more robust public transportation system, something that you see in most of your major metro cities. You know, to me, the budget that's presented is right. We reduced our tax rate last year. My concern right now is, you know, the fact that we're trying to get a loan to cover the cost for the Bank of America building that we bought for Cape Fear Community College. And if indications are what I'm seeing from the LGC, we may not get a loan. And I know we are planning to pay ourselves back through loan proceeds, the twelve million dollars plus that we borrowed for that building. And so if that doesn't happen, how does that affect our budget? Will we have enough to maintain the things that we have? And I know that every month, sales tax has continued to perform much better than anticipated. And so I think that may be a cushion for us. I know that the interest from the three hundred million dollars from the Southern Hospital and the fifty million dollars we have set aside in the mental health fund has definitely helped us balance our budget as well. And, you know, I know that we continue to go back to the well for those things. I don't have a problem with the half-cent reduction. But I caution us on making sure that our reserves are right in the future. When I look back at when Hurricane Florence hit our county, we were fortunate to have a robust fund balance where we could actually go out and let contracts and pick up storm debris just like that. Brunswick County, not so. Their Commissioners hemmed and hauled and trash piled up and debris piled up until they figured out what to do. Pirna County had no plan in place. And they just had folks dropping stuff off at different sites, and they finally found the resources. And again, we never can tell when a storm may or may not come, just like we can never tell when a pandemic may come like COVID-19 and the impacts that that had on our budget. So as you look at a budget, and I said this in our general review, you know, when you say I want to see a reduction, I need to understand what that means. And I need for us to all to understand the impacts and the unintended consequences of a reduction or an increase and how that plays out long-term on things that we may need. We have just ended hurricane season, and again, I'm not wishing a hurricane on our community, but I know that our county has been fortunate to take care of our citizens. We're one of eighty-five counties in the country, and there are over three thousand counties that have two triple-A bond ratings, which means that we are fiscally responsible, that we do manage our resources wisely and quite well. We get budget awards every year based on how well our budget department does. So I think that we are, for the most part, the economic hub of southeastern North Carolina. Folks look to us for leadership. They look to us for medical care and all the services that we have to offer here. And so at the end of the day, I don't think a reduction is needed, but I will support the half-cent reduction.
Thanks, Sheriff. Mr. Skelis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will say that there are folks in this community who have reached out to me, and they have advocated for me to advocate for a tax cut. I, well, you know who you are. I heard you, and I did advocate for that. It was critical for me that we achieve a tax cut for the people of this county, and I'm so glad that this amended budget, as we've made motion to amend it, does so. That in and of itself, in my estimation, is a huge win for the people of this county. Even still, as Commissioner Pierce and Commissioner Zappel both mentioned, I am broadly concerned about the rate and speed of our budget's increase over the years. In particular, I want to take a moment to recognize that the ARPA, the American Rescue Plan of 2021, also called the COVID-19 stimulus package, has directly contributed to that unprecedented increase here and elsewhere. But let's be clear, as Commissioner Zappel already stated, those ARPA funds will not last forever. And when those temporary federal dollars are gone, we Commissioners are going to have to determine whether the programs and initiatives created by those funds can be sustained in perpetuity by our taxpayers and our local dollars. My metric for government funding will always be based on whether a program or initiative provides a clear, objective return on investment for the people. We must not forget that notion and cannot shy away from the hard conversations and decisions we will need to make next year and in the years to come to ensure that our budget grows at sustainable levels. I also want to note that the New Hanover County, the New Hanover Community Endowment was created for a specific purpose. I look forward to seeing that purpose come fully to life. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
For our county manager, again, I made the comment about the purchase of the Bank of America building. In the letter we got from the LGC with questions, what are your thoughts and implications on our budget as we move forward if we are not able to get loan proceeds?
Well, we already own the building. The president of the community college spoke to it. We would not be in a position to reimburse the county. And so what has been fund balance will be affected by that. Now, there are some dollars, as we understand, in the state budget that could well be appropriated to the community college. They in turn would be committed to buying the building from the county. So there's an opportunity to replenish fund balance in that regard. But if the LGC tomorrow does not approve the debt instrument that's before it, we will be short the eleven point four million dollars that we purchased the building for on April the third. And so we'll be eleven million and a half dollars less in terms of liquidity and the ability to react and respond to one-time expenses if that loan is not approved tomorrow.
And how's that affect our fund balance policy?
It would have some bearing. It would not take us below the floor of eighteen percent. The board has a policy that it will have fund balance of between eighteen and twenty-one percent. We've had the good fortune in prior years to be above twenty-one percent, and that money's put to use in the recommended budget for one-time capital and capital outlay. But it would absolutely bring you below your twenty-one percent top-line metric.
And I know that Commissioner Zappel had some, maybe some line items, things in the recommended proposal that he has. And my preference is that you use your discretion to figure out how to pick and pull. I would not want us to direct certain positions not be funded. I think you and your staff have the ability to understand how to right-size the organization, make sure we have the right people in the right places. Give me your thoughts on that.
Well, Commissioner Barfield, we're here to serve the board and the decisions that it makes. And we're glad to advance whatever vote the board takes.
Mr. Zappel, your thoughts?
I think that the line items that we had here for cuts that would take us down to two point six, take, remove two point six million dollars in total savings are appropriate. But I understand what you're saying, and I think that of those, we worked out, I see only a single position that has been affected by those. And Commissioner Skelis, you had a thought?
No, just wanted to clarify that the notion about cutting positions really is a singular position. It is a new position. It is not an existing position.
It's not a cut, yes. Thank you. And if I believe, if I remember correctly, the request was for two new positions going in there. And indeed, all we're saying is add one instead of two in that particular category.
And what was that category again?
That's the social worker.
And Commissioner Barfield, it's within the Quality Assurance Division, which is looking at compliance with program rules. So it was two social workers recommended for quality assurance purposes. And so as the Commissioners referenced, this would be one of the two that would be funded if the board proceeded.
Just for reference, Chris, can you remind us what is in the state budget for the community college at current?
My understanding is that there is fifteen million dollars in the first year of the biennium. Thirty, thirty million dollars proposed over two years to assist with purchasing and then in a phased way renovating the building for the purposes of the allied health and nursing program. Those are not dollars, again, as I understand, that are appropriated to the county. They are, would be appropriated to the community college. And then the community college, for the intended purposes, would exercise accordingly.
And we would reimburse ourselves the twelve million dollars that we've advanced?
If, in fact, the dollars hold through and the community college honors the outline. I could not say with one hundred percent certainty that they will appear. It was outstanding to see that they were. Candidly, we've never been in this position before. And so it's good fortune to have, but I don't know if it will actually make its way into the conference committee report. And we do have the bearing of the debt issuance tomorrow.
And if I just might take this opportunity to thank our state legislators for seeing the importance of our community college and putting that in their budget. We certainly appreciate that, and hopefully we'll get a vote on that in the next couple of weeks.
Everybody done? Okay. Is there a motion on the floor to reduce the property tax rate by half a cent?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Four one? Okay. Next is approval for economic development and economic incentives, appropriations, and adoption of the 2023-24 recommended budget. In accordance with North Carolina General Statute fourteen dash two-three-four point three, which prohibits public officials who also serve as directors, officers, or governing board members for nonprofits from participating in making or administering any contracts with those nonprofits. When a governing board considers a contract with a nonprofit, including any award of money, board members involved with that nonprofit must recuse themselves from any deliberation and record their recusal with the clerk. This recusal process for the year 2023-2024 recommended budget meets the governing board member's duty to vote in recusal procedure requirements. The recusal vote will excuse each board member from deliberation in voting on appropriations and expenditures for their, for the non-county economic development and social impact agencies due to a conflict of interest. It specifically excuses Chair Robbenbach from Wilmington Business Development and Wilmington Regional Film Commission, Vice Chair Pierce from the Southeastern Partnership Incorporated, Commissioner Barfield from Blue Ribbon Commission Prevention of Youth Violence, Greater Wilmington Youth Initiative Incorporated, and Soaring as Eagles Outreach Ministry. Commissioner Skelis from Cape Fear Council of Governments and Wilmington Downtown, Inc., and Commissioner Zappel from Leading Into New Communities and Athene Hall for the Performing Arts Incorporated. Is there a motion and a second for a recusal vote?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. A vote is needed to appropriate and administer a contract for public, I mean, for individual non-county economic development based on the finding that the appropriations and expenditures will increase the population, taxable property, agricultural industries, employment, industrial output, output, or business prospects for the county and social impact agencies. The board must take a separate vote for each agency. Is there a motion to appropriate and administer a contract with Wilmington Business Development? I cannot vote.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass. Is there a motion to appropriate and administer a conflict with, a contract with Wilmington Regional Film Commission? I cannot vote.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to appropriate and administer a contract with the Southeastern Partnership Incorporated? Vice Chair Pierce does not vote.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Is there a motion to appropriate and administer a contract with Blue Ribbon Commission Prevention of Youth Violence? Commissioner, Commissioner Barfield does not vote.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Is there a motion to appropriate and administer a contract with Greater Wilmington Youth Initiative? Commissioner Barfield does not vote.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Is there a motion to appropriate and administer a contract with Cape Fear Council of Governments? Commissioner Skelis does not vote.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pass. Is there a motion to appropriate and administer a contract with Leading Into New Communities Incorporated? Commissioner Zappel does not vote.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pass. Is there a motion to appropriate and administer a contract with Athene Hall Center for the Performing Arts? Commissioner Zappel does not vote.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman? Go ahead. Mr. Chairman, I may have missed a vote on these items, but I think we might have inadvertently skipped Soaring as Eagles Outreach Ministry as well as Wilmington Downtown Incorporated. Can we revisit those, please, sir?
Okay, I'll do that right now.
I believe that we got the Cape Fear Council of Governments.
Is there a motion to appropriate and administer a contract with Downtown Wilmington Downtown, Inc.? Commissioner Skelis cannot vote.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
And is there a motion to appropriate and administer a contract with Leading Into New Communities? Is that, no, I get that one.
Soaring as Eagles is the one, Bill. I think it's the fourth up or fifth up.
Okay, I see. Is there a motion to appropriate and administer a contract with Soaring as Eagles Outreach Ministry? Commissioner Barfield does not vote.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Is that, okay. Is there a motion and a second to adopt the Mental Health and Substance Use Fund expenditures and the Opioid Settlement Fund expenditures in the 2023-2024 budget ordinance? All members may vote on this.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pass. Is there a motion and a second exclusive of the appropriations voted for the non-county economic development and economic incentive appropriations recusing Commissioners with conflicts of interest to adopt the 2023-2024 budget ordinance inclusive of the capital projects ordinance as revised? All members may vote.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Done. Let me take a five-minute break. I know no one's gonna believe this, but I made a mistake. We left out the Chamber of Commerce. Is there a, is there a motion to appropriate and administer a contract with Wilmington Chamber of Commerce?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good thing she was here.
You need to ask Commissioner Pierce.
Commissioner Pierce, I just want to clarify that on the exclusive of the appropriations, the motion for the exclusive of the appropriations voted on for the non-county economic development and economic development incentives appropriations recusing commissioners with conflicts of interest to adopt the twenty-three, twenty-four budget ordinance inclusive of the project, capital project ordinances as revised, have your motion down as a yes.
As no.
Okay. Thank you for the clarity.
Okay, number fourteen is request of New Henry County Planning and Land Use to amend section ten dot two dot three Community Information Meeting to clarify expectations and standards for community information meetings required for conditional rezonings, plan developments, and intensive industry special use permits. This is a public hearing where we hear a staff presentation. Then any supporters and opponents will be allowed fifteen minutes for their presentation and additional five minutes for rebuttal. Yes, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The text amendment we're presenting for your consideration tonight is a staff-led initiative that we've been working toward for several months now, using the text amendment process for items initiated by staff that has been developed to allow for ongoing maintenance amendments of the Unified Development Ordinance since the U D O project was completed in 2020. Basically, this amendment is intended to clarify for all code users the requirements for community information meetings, which the U D O requires for applications for conditional rezonings, plan developments, and intensive industry special use permits. We want to make sure that applicant teams, adjacent residents, and board members have a common understanding of the meeting's intent, what is acceptable in terms of format, and the type of information that will be included when an application moves forward to a public hearing. These meetings are required to be held before an application is submitted and are the first time many residents and property owners learn about a proposal. The conversations that occur at these meetings are intended to be considered by applicants before they finalize their application and often result in modifications to the proposal that is ultimately submitted, reviewed by planning and technical staff, and shown to the public in advance of the public hearing to help them determine whether or not they wish to come to make comments. The item in front of you tonight includes two types of standards. There is an actual amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance, or U D O, which can only be amended by this board at a public hearing. There are also several documents that outline administrative requirements, the same as application deadlines and forms. These documents are intended to be approved initially by this board, but could be updated as necessary with approval of the county manager. These provisions are still administrative rules, but they allow for more flexibility and future clarifications than the actual ordinance. The amendment itself includes only a few key features. It specifies that submitting an application for a conditional rezoning, plan development, and intensive industry special use permit without holding an actual meeting is no longer an option. Currently, our ordinance allows for applicants to provide a report detailing why a community meeting was not held, but we've been unable to identify a situation where it would be appropriate for someone to move forward within an application and public hearing without holding one. The draft amendment also clarifies that the purpose of the meeting is to inform the adjacent residents of the project, to allow them to learn about the proposal and ask questions, for the applicant to explain the review process, and for the applicant to identify ways that the proposal could be modified in order to address concerns, if possible. The last purpose was first articulated in the creation of the U D O in 2020, so the new language is intended to highlight this, so it's clear to code users who might not be aware of that change. The amendment also specifies that notice should be provided to the planning department when it's sent out to adjacent property owners, so that we can send it out to our Sunshine email list and post it on our website. And finally, the amendment specifies that the list of everyone invited must be submitted as part of the application, as questions often arrive during staff review and at the planning board public hearing as to who got the invitation and who did not. And it also allows for staff to establish those administrative requirements. These would be approved by the board, but then could be modified upon the approval of the county manager and provide details about scheduling meetings used to satisfy the code requirements. They outline expectations of how the meeting will be conducted, the type of information that should be provided, and recommendations regarding appropriate locations and formats based based on the demographics of the surrounding community. And they provide information on what meeting notice should include and on the requirements for the report, I'm sorry, reports submitted with an application. The draft notification template outlines the information that must be provided to adjacent residents, what information must be included in the description of the proposal, and instructions for virtual meetings to ensure they're as accessible as possible. And the draft application report form is intended to provide more consistency in the information that's provided to staff and boards with the application. The planning board considered this request at their May fourth meeting and voted six to zero to recommend approval of the draft provided by staff. The draft that's being considered by this board tonight consists of what the planning board recommended approval of, except for some additional clarifying language suggested by management, which is shown in underlined blue text on page fourteen dash three dash one of your packet. Staff does recommend approval of this version of the text amendment. After the close of the public comment period and prior to the planning board meeting, we received twelve total comments, eight in support, two in opposition, and two that did not indicate either support or opposition. You've also received one email sent directly to you last week. A frequent request of these comments was an additional provision to add a new requirement for community information meetings for industrial S U Ps in the county's light industrial district. And I believe that in the email you received last week, that was expanded to all special use permits for industrial uses. So staff has indicated that because the request is outside the scope of what we have moved through the process on and what was publicly noticed, that if we receive direction from you tonight to pursue that, we would suggest it would need to be a separate approval process and not tied with what is under your consideration tonight. If you elect to approve the text amendment, an initial draft of administrative documents tonight, they will be posted to the county website later this week, so they can be used for applications for our next planning board item deadline of July third. Thank you for your time tonight. That's all I have for you, but I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Rebecca. Anybody have a question?
Rebecca, could you go back to your, I think it's the, the fourth slide? The one that has the, the blue and the red and the black strike to? And could you, for the sake of the audience here, could, Jared, could we blow this up? Or Eric, wherever you are, is there any chance we can make that font higher? You can't read it, I guess is what I'm saying, and I'd like for everybody to be able to see it.
And, and I'm fine with reading it out loud if that would?
It's a lot of stuff. Yeah, I just, yes, that box there, is there a way to isolate that and just increase the font? I guess not. Oh, there you go. Yeah.
So the clarifying language, just to explain, is we wanted to make sure that it was very clear that if you completed your community information report within that three-day application completeness window after the official deadline, then we would still accept your application and would be eligible to move forward to the next planning board meeting. We did not want to give the impression that if you did that and there were other things wrong with your application, then we would still move it forward. So we, we worked a little bit with the language just to make sure it was clear as possible.
And also Rebecca, in the first sentence, there's a, in the red there, it says digital forum. I wonder if that is a typo? Should that be format?
Uh, and, under the purpose?
Yeah, right in the very first sentence, yeah.
It, it should read, and it may be hard to see, a digital forum.
Okay, so forum is what you're going after? In-person or digital forum? What is a digital forum?
So it's, it's just like a, a virtual meeting. So instead of having a public forum, like a public meeting, you would have a digital forum for a digital meeting.
Like a Zoom or Teams?
Correct.
Right. Thank you.
Anything else, Rob?
Nope. And if you could just scroll down to the bottom to those who are reading it, thank you. Have an opportunity, that's all. Thank you. Those are all the questions I have.
We got six people signed up in favor. Anybody would like to speak? Roger Shee? And if you, you, I got fifteen minutes altogether between all six of you.
Good afternoon and good to see you again. Thank you for the opportunity to make comment on this important topic. I want to thank the planning staff for bringing text amendment forward that seeks to clarify expectations and standards for community information meetings. And I thank the planning board for supporting it too. Community engagement and input from the community on decisions that impact us is fundamental to good governance. As mentioned in staff's materials, this amendment has strategic plan alignment with not just good and logical governance and effective management procedures, but it also increases transparency and awareness, awareness of county actions. In other words, this amendment is a win for everyone and it seeks to enhance and preserve some of the beauty and resources that we have here. Though it may be considered a requirement for businesses and developers, I feel that most business operations would also see this as a great opportunity to be a good partner with the community. I believe these community meetings could be good for all industrial use applications, and I would appreciate a motion to direct staff to consider a similar amendment for I-one light industrial as well. Not everyone can sit in your seats for those of the planning board and planning staff. The community does deserve a seat too. They can sometimes help with fact gathering, as well as pose important questions or provide local expertise to issues. Don't get me wrong, I very much appreciate the expertise of the planning staff to assess controversial issues, and also appreciate the planning board and all of you for wading through sometimes voluminous data sets to make decisions. It's not an easy job you have to assess the pros and cons of an issue to make difficult decisions that have lasting implications for the community and business. This amendment rightly codifies expectations for these meetings as mentioned by staff, makes them consistent with the intent of the 2016 Comprehensive Plan, and the amendment states that it supports the goals of the Comprehensive Plan for a vibrant community that supports investment, that also conserves and enhances our sense of place. Although I know most of you know the benefits of community meetings, let me give a quick example of a successful one. Sand mine was proposed adjacent to Highway four twenty-one and proximal to the coal ash storage at the Sutton plant. At the community meeting, lots of questions came up, but one in particular was that lowering the water table while mining would likely lead to movement of contaminants that were known to be present with the coal ash. Standard mining procedures are to dry mine, meaning to pump the water out of the pits to mine, and this creates a cone of depression or lowering the water table. This leads to the movement of the contaminants. Alternatives were discussed at the meeting and following, and a modification to the mining operation was brought up to the planning board meeting by Dave Weaver, and we went mine that area, which prevent, prevented the movement of those contaminants. This was a great result of a community meeting. Please support the amendment request and also consider a request to direct staff to consider similar language in the UDO for the I-one districts. Thank you and staff for your time today and positive consideration of community meetings. Thank you.
Robert Parr?
Dr. Parr, I've missed you. My name is Dr. Robert Parr, and please give me a one-minute warning, 'cause I'm, I'm not good at watching all this stuff. Tonight I'm speaking for the North Carolina Coastal Federation, and I'm gonna go over the fine points of the letter for the audience at home and, and here. On behalf of Cape Fear River Watch, New Hanover County NAACP Coastal Plain Conservation Group, League of Women Voters, the Lower Cape Fear, Cape Fear Sierra Club, Brunswick Environmental Action Team, Del Webb River Lights Local Issues, and North Carolina Coastal Federation, please accept our support for text amendment TA two twenty-three dash two regarding community guidelines. We believe that community information should be required for the I-one areas, but in addition, there's some discussion on including those for all industrial uses. We ask you to direct the planning staff to open direct discussions with industrial community stakeholders with respect to this important issue. We're not asking you to solve this issue tonight. We're asking you to direct the planning director to open up a discussion group where we can come back with all the details on this. The, this is a similar problem that we have with industrial uses or any uses. It's a very, very complex problem that cannot be discussed in the short time. I have a couple slides I'd like to show you. The first slide refers, this is an actual community information meeting in progress. It was in 2016, neighbors learned about proposed Castle Hain asphalt plant. At this meeting, new components were brought up. The original applicant wanted to use coal for fuel. At the meeting, we said, why not use natural gas? He switched to natural gas. Also, there was a complex wet down area that was possibly gonna go into wetlands that was modified at the meeting. These were not brought up by the planning department. And that's important, 'cause the planning department cannot, does not have the expertise or the time that the citizens have in these matters. This is, the citizens learned about proposed sand mine expansion. This is what Roger just referred to. In this case, there was the possibility of toxic emissions going through the groundwater. Once again, this is citizen information that is vital, and it can only come from citizen information meeting. Uranium, chromium, and worse, sand mine. These are highly toxic developments that were not brought up by the planning department, the planning board, and it was brought up to you because the citizens brought it forward to you. This is what many people consider our jewel. There's three years in a row where we were the highest or best-ranked air quality in the nation. All over, people come to us for a good quality air. The bad, the, a, a unfit, a non-fitting industry in the wrong place can destroy all of this. And that's why we're asking for the citizens to be involved early and get you the information you need. These are the citizens. There's a critical mass, talent, and energy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. David Pollak?
I'm David Pollak, representing this-
Just to say, there's eight minutes and forty seconds.
I know, and I was representing the Cape Fear Sierra Club, and I yield my time.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Kent Burdette? There's a couple people behind you, but there's eight and a half minutes.
All right. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. My name is Kent Burdette. I'm the Cape Fear River Keeper. I'm here today representing Cape Fear River Watch and our membership made up of more than a thousand local residents. Our organization has been working to protect and improve water quality in our community for thirty years. Also represented in the room today, but not speaking in the interest of sharing time or a number of other local organizations, including New Hanover County NAACP, the Coastal Plain Conservation Group, Cape Fear Sierra Club, the League of Women Voters of the Lower Cape Fear, and the Brunswick Environmental Action Team. Together, these organizations represent thousands of local citizens. I think everyone here understands that tran, that transparency is central to good governance. Transparency builds trust. Transparency helps citizens understand that their leaders represent them and not special interests. And transparency leads to better decisions. The citizen information meeting for industrial development is the backbone of citizen involvement and decisions that could have significant impacts on the future of our county. Community information meetings allow the public to learn about proposed industrial development, voice their concerns, provide feedback, and ask questions. These meetings also allow industrial applicants to explain their projects to the public and address concerns on the front end of the application process. The Citizen Act information meeting is not limited by the time constraints for the planning board or commissioner meetings. And finally, community information meetings give citizens and citizen groups with relative, with relevant expertise, the opportunity to help our county make well-informed decisions. Cape Fear River Watch, our partners here today, and our combined memberships value transparency, and we urge you to require that a citizen information meeting be part of the process for industrial development. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Clark Henley?
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm Clark Henry, resident of North, of New Hanover County, North Carolina, and a resident living with polluted groundwater and under my house, in my well. But I'm not here representing any organization, but rather a professional perspective. I'm a professional planner, working on Brownfield revitalization the last twenty-three years. And just, I second all the testimony here before you, but these meetings involving the public can not only help you in the near term, but in the very long term. These meetings uncover issues that can be solved before, you know, that businesses go out of business, industries move, and when they move, they leave a legacy of contamination behind them. That way, after then, go up and clean up and leaving generations of people impacted by contamination. But the economic development impact of said contamination leaves us in the lurch. So these meetings can also help ameliorate the problems that we can anticipate in the future. So again, I just, I'm, I'm here to support Ms. Roth and Mr. Kudry moving forward with exploring this in the future, and I'll yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, sir. Kane Darrell?
Good evening. I'm Kane Darrell. I live in Castle Hain. And I would just like to quickly share a story, one that I consider is a great example of the importance of the community information and why it needs to be mandatory for certain industries. Way back in February 2014, I stood before the New Hanover County Planning Board to express my concerns about a sand mine, one that Dr. Parr had mentioned earlier, that was proposed for property in Castle Hain adjacent to GE. Planning staff had suggested the board approve the special use permit required to mine the sixty-eight acres, and in fact, Deener had already issued a mining permit to the property owners. What were my concerns? Well, in the back corner of the GE property, there was, and still is, an EPA classified hazardous waste site, and chemicals from the site had leached from GE onto the adjacent property exactly where they wanted to mine this sand. Chemicals such as vinyl chloride, a known carcinogen, chromium, think Aaron Brockovich, and maybe most alarmingly, radioactive uranium, to name just a few. Incredulously, when I made my comments to the board that night, it was the first they had heard of the hazardous waste site and the toxins that were lying below the surface. For obvious reasons, the property owners had not been sharing that information with anyone. But thank goodness, the sand mine never happened. Why? Because the property owners were required to hold a community information meeting, and because a group of citizens who attended that meeting were able to glean information that the planning staff had not. And so because of the initiative and the efforts of just a few ordinary citizens, the permit to allow the toxic sand to be mined was not issued. And in fact, at the state level, Deener had actually revoked the mining per, the mining permit as well, leaving our community's air, our groundwater, property values, and quality of life safe from the toxins and other negative effects that may have resulted if that sign, sand mine had been allowed to happen. I have no doubt that without that community information meeting requirement and the involvement of ordinary citizens, that permit would have been approved that night, way back in February of 2014. These are our neighborhoods, our communities, our lives that are being affected. And I think we deserve the right to be informed about what may be happening in them. Thank you for taking the time to hear me.
Thank you, ma'am. I believe that's all the people that have signed up to speak. So I'm gonna close the public hearing. Is there any board discussion? Okay. Was there a vote?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to, um, Ken, did you give us a script on this?
Yes, sir. It's fourteen dash one.
Mr. Chair, I move to recommend approval of the proposed amendment to the New Hanover County Unified Development Ordinance to clarify expectations for required community information meetings and the proposed administrative documents. I find it to be consistent with the purpose and the intent of the 2016 Comprehensive Plan, because they clarify an important part of the planning process necessary to support the goals of the Comprehensive Plan for a vibrant community supportive of private investment that also conserves and enhances our sense of place. I also find recommending approval of the proposed amendment reasonable and in the public interest, because it clarifies expectations for applicants, citizens, and board members related to community meetings.
Seconded, Mr. Chair. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Bye, boo.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
As a follow-up, I'd like to propose a motion to direct staff, planning and zoning, to pick up the discussion about, or consider the idea of including community information meetings for the I-one- community information meetings for the I-one light industrial, um, special use permits that currently is, is not there. I know it's a kind of a mouthful, I kind of balled up there, but I think, uh, Kim, you can make me sound better than that.
Commissioner Zappala, are you wanting to say you're making a motion to include required community information sessions for the I-one light industrial areas for special use permits?
Um, just exactly what you said, and thank you very much for copying that down so accurately.
You're welcome.
Um, so I'd like to make that motion.
Uh, point of clarification, so are you amending what you, and I apologize if I'm not understanding. I thought that you were asking them to explore, not necessarily make a recommendation one way or the other. I, I don't have enough information to sign off on a recommendation at this stage.
Yeah, absolutely, uh, Commissioner Skles. What I'm asking for is to give direction to our planning department so that they can pick up this conversation to explore.
And bring back their findings to the commission.
Exactly.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five votes. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, rezoning request Z twenty-three dash zero nine, request by, by Rob Tanner with Impeccable Development applicant on behalf of Andrea Jones, Gwendolyn Horton, Kristen Deener, Dwayne Barr, and Kimberly Barr, property owners to rezone seven parcels totaling approximately eleven point seven seven acres of land located at sixty-eight hundred, sixty-eight oh eight, sixty-eight fourteen, sixty-eight eighteen, sixty-eight twenty, sixty-eight twenty-four, and sixty-eight twenty-eight. Carolina Beach Road from R fifteen residential to two point three seven acres to CZDB dash one neighborhood business and eight point six six acres to CZDRMF dash M residential multifamily, moderate density for a convenient store with fuel stations and a maximum one hundred and twenty-eight unit multifamily development. This is a public hearing where we hear a presentation from staff. Then the applicant and the any of the opponents will each have fifteen minutes for their presentation and an additional five minutes for rebuttal. Yes, sir?
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. The applicant is requesting to rezone approximately eleven point seven seven acres from the R fifteen residential district to a conditional B-one neighborhood business and RMFM residential multifamily moderate density district. Site is located at the sixty-eight hundred block of Carolina Beach Road at the intersection of Carolina Beach and Myrtle Grove Roads, and was originally zoned R fifteen in the nineteen seventies. At the time, the purpose of the district was to ensure housing densities remain lower due to the need for private wells and septic systems. Since then, public water and sewer has become available in the area. From the aerial photography, we can see the site is bordered by a manufactured home park to the north, and while not seen in the aerial photography, the parcels to the south were recently rezoned for a similar use of a convenience store with fuel pumps and triplexes. The old Cape Cod neighborhood also borders the project to the south, and the area to the west is dedicated conservation land held by Cape Fear Community College and the NC Coastal Land Trust. Here's an aerial photo of the site with images of the property from different angles. Here's examples of development you might see in the R fifteen district. Here are examples of multifamily developments. And here are examples of neighboring convenience stores on Shipyard Boulevard in Wilmington with apartments behind them. Concept plan includes a convenience store with fuel pumps, a private access road, one hundred and twenty-eight multifamily dwelling units divided between six apartment buildings, a stormwater pond, an amenity area, and perimeter parking. Project can be divided into two portions. The eastern portion consists of the convenience store with fuel pumps, an access road along the northern property line giving access to both the residential and commercial portions of the project, with perimeter landscape buffers on the property lines and between the commercial and residential sections. There are two significant live oaks along Carolina Beach Road conditioned to be preserved on-site. The applicants are also providing a pedestrian facility as either a sidewalk or multi-use path along Carolina Beach Road with an easement to connect to future off-site pedestrian facilities. The multifamily portion is immediately west of the convenience store and accessed by the same northern access road. An amenity area acts as a transition between the commercial and residential uses and can range from open space to indoor or outdoor amenities for the residents. Stormwater facility for both portions of the project is in the northwest corner of the site, and a condition has been included requiring an agreement for future maintenance. The multifamily area consists of five three-story multifamily structures and one two-story structure closest to the neighboring residential properties to the south that has been conditioned to remain two stories in response to concerns expressed at the community meeting. Parking lot circles five of the buildings as an additional spatial buffer, and another amenity and tree save area has been provided in the center of the site. A condition has been provided requiring the preservation of trees in this area that are not removed for essential site improvements. Access to the site is proposed as full access at the signalized intersection of Carolina Beach and Myrtle Grove Roads, and an additional second right-in, right-out drive is proposed to the south of the intersection. This slide depicts the estimated trip generation for the site. Based on estimated traffic impacts, the project is anticipated to generate approximately three hundred and thirty AM and two hundred and fifty PM peak hour trips more than under current zoning. New developments that are anticipated to generate more than one hundred trips during any peak hour are required to submit a traffic impact analysis as part of their rezoning application. The TIA was approved by the WMPO and DOT in March of this year for the same level of development proposed in this request with anticipated full project build-out of two thousand and twenty-four. Traffic counts were taken in November of two thousand and twenty-two at an anticipated background growth rate for the area of one point five percent. Required improvements include extension of the existing northbound U-turn lane on Carolina Beach Road with a new traffic signal for the U-turn movement, construction of a new southbound right turn lane at the intersection into the site with modifications to the signal timing, and construction of a right-in, right-out secondary access to the site south of the intersection. This map depicts the development in the immediate area. In addition to the two subdivisions currently under construction, two additional rezonings have been approved within one mile of the site totaling approximately two hundred new residential units. Proposed project is located along a major arterial highway that is currently nearing capacity. Carolina Beach Myrtle Grove Road intersection is an important signalized intersection on the corridor, and proposed improvements listed in the TIA include improvements to the signalized intersection and account for additional general background growth for the area. Based on the current general student generation rate, the potential increase would result in approximately twenty-one additional students and would be generated under current zoning. This generation rate is updated on an annual basis using actual student numbers provided by the school system and provides a countywide picture of the number of students each new residential unit is likely to yield, taking into account that most new residential units in the county do not provide homes for large numbers of school-aged children. Due to the size of the parcel and access on the Carolina Beach Road, property is less likely to be developed with lower density detached single-family housing. The applicant has provided additional conditions to minimize impacts to adjacent parcels and allow for future pedestrian infrastructure connections. The proposed project is the third convenience store with fuel stations at an intersection that is transitioning into a node. While the commercial projects involve the same land use, the density of commercial uses of an area is outside the scope of staff review. The comprehensive plan designates this property as community mixed use, which is intended to promote a mix of retail, office, and residential development at moderate densities up to fifteen units per acre and a building height range of one to three stories. Proposed concept plan includes commercial development at the intersection intended to serve the surrounding community and travelers on Carolina Beach Road. And the proposed attached housing type increases housing diversity in the area. The density of fourteen dwelling units per acre is below the maximum allowed for the RMFM zoning district and slightly less than the maximum recommended for the community mixed use place type. Additional conditions provide screening and protection for addition, for adjacent residents and pedestrian infrastructure along Carolina Beach Road. The applicant has also provided an additional voluntary condition establishing ten percent of the units as workforce housing for a minimum of fifteen years. Planning board considered this item at their May fourth meeting. At the meeting, one member of the public spoke in opposition to the request citing concerns about traffic safety at the intersection. Planning board voted unanimously to recommend approval of proposed rezoning with the applicant's additional voluntary condition related to workforce housing, finding the request consistent with the two thousand and sixteen comprehensive plan and reasonable and in the public interest. Scale and density of the proposed rezoning conforms with the recommendations for the place type, and improvements required by the TIA accommodate the additional traffic generated from the project. Additional conditions have been provided to reduce impacts to neighbors, provide pedestrian infrastructure, and workforce housing. Based on the policy guidance of the two thousand and sixteen comprehensive plan, zoning considerations, technical review, and the recommended uses and residential density for the community mixed use place type, staff concurs with the planning board's recommendation with the following conditions related to screening, tree preservation, a height limit for the southernmost multifamily structure, exterior lighting, pedestrian access, stormwater management, and the additional voluntary condition related to workforce housing ensuring workforce housing affordability for ten percent of the units for fifteen years. This condition was designed with department's long-range planning and housing team and the county attorney's office outlining the requirements for an agreement addressing monitoring and enforcement by the county. Staff has not received any additional comments regarding this application. Should the rezoning be approved, development of the site would be subject to additional development review to ensure all land use regulations are met. This concludes staff's presentation. Representatives of the WMPO and county engineering are here for any questions, and the applicant is present and has prepared a presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody got any questions? Rob?
Yeah, uh, thanks. Robert, in your, I think the third sentence you said was that, uh, now water and sewer is available in the area? That's a big statement. I mean, how far away is water and sewer from the site?
We do have a letter of commitment from CFPUA stating the capacity is available in the area with, uh, extensions the developer would make to nearby water and sewer. They have some information in their presentation to address those conversations with CFPUA.
Yeah, thanks.
Rob, this is the one you had the questions on the other day about the ground?
Oh, yeah, I got a bunch of questions. I was gonna wait until, uh, I think Amy's gonna-
You wanna, you wanna ask Robert or when you're going to?
Let's wait for, uh, wait, talk to Amy, uh, Amy, yes, excuse me, sorry. You're not Amy.
Thanks.
Thanks, girl.
Yes, sir.
I want to apologize in advance. I've been fighting a bit of a cold, so, um, if I cough or, or lose my voice, I do apologize. And I have a presentation. Um, while they're pulling that up, I just want to say good afternoon, um, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. My name's Amy Schaefer. I'm here tonight on behalf of the applicant, and with me, on behalf of the applicant, I have Rob Tanner and Dan Hernandez from Impeccable Development. We also have our civil engineer, Alex Kimbrel, from Kim Lee Horn, and our traffic engineer, Jeremy Porter, with Rami Kemp, here to answer any specific questions regarding the project. This is just an illustrative plan of what we hope to bring to the site if the rezoning is approved. And, um, I want to thank Mr. Farrell for his very in-depth presentation, um, and I won't reiterate a lot of what he said, but I do think it's important to go over some points. One major point I'd like to make is that this project is at the intersection of Myrtle Grove Road and Carolina Beach Road. We are right at the light and, um, do have that direct access, which I think is a, a major point for everything that's been going on in Carolina Beach Road recently that kind of differentiates our project a little bit. So here again is just a, a little aerial of, of where we are. Again, you've seen pictures of, of what's around. I do want to say that while the surrounding zonings are R fifteen, the actual use of the property right now from a GIS calculation is a little bit higher than that. So Carolina Pines, right to the north of us, is about seven units per acre, and Old Cape Cod is about six units per acre. Um, and then, as Mr. Farrell stated, the rezoning of, of the Bayat property in front of us. So, you know, we're not surrounded by a bunch of two point five units per acre or single-family housing, um, like some of the other R fifteen zoning districts are in actual use. And again, just, uh, the project breakup is, as you've previously heard, and I'm happy to go into the details of, of any of this. I did want to say that after the community meeting, the project did change a lot. We had initially come in at, um, medium family high density, um, and submitted for almost three hundred, um, apartment units. After the community meeting and after meeting with staff, um, in our initial concept reviews, going over what the future land use plan calls for, the actual submission was a hundred and twenty-eight, um, apartments, um, which is, as, as was stated, under both the multifamily medium and the, um, community mixed use designations in that area. We also took Building G, which is the building to the south next to Old Cape Cod, and at the request of the neighbors, limited that to a two-story building, and I'll, I'll get to that in a bit more detail here in a minute. Um, here's the specifics of the site plan, and if you have any specific questions about that, um, Alex Kimbrel can, can come up and address those. But if I first can just finish the presentation real quick. One important thing, um, we did have an arborist come out and actually do our, um, tree survey. We had initially an engineering firm come out, and it was a little bit different than, than what we saw on the ground, so we had an arborist come out. And that arborist was able to tell us that we had two significant live oak trees on the front of the property. So in addition to those other changes I mentioned, we bumped back the commercial, um, component of the property in order to be able to save these two live oaks at the front in addition to their critical, um, root zone. Here's just some illustrations, just hoping to give you some idea of, of the height of what the multifamily would be. And again, we did agree to that two-story building next to Old Cape Cod, which is a limited height of about thirty-four feet. Under R fifteen zoning, you can build up to forty feet. So under the current zoning, there could be a taller house next to the, the single-family residential than what we're proposing, and the buffers and setbacks wouldn't be as great either. We've also agreed with the neighbors to put a fence around the property. That was something that they asked for and that, and that we agreed to do. So here we go, right? The housing needs study, and it was actually recently updated. Um, I didn't ask Judge Corpening to say anything about the need for apartments. Um, it, it just is, and it is, and we have data saying, um, that it is. But what does that mean practically speaking, right? We all know what the data says. We've agreed to ten percent affordable units, eighty percent AMI, at no less than fifteen years. So looking at that right now, um, the closest apartment building I could find was Willow Glen Apartments, which is up on Saunders Road. Right now, um, their apartment availability, if they have it, that's the actual market numbers that I used according to apartments dot com when I looked. That's the range of what a single-family apartment, if you can find one close to this area, is going for. With the high home rent, that top number is more what you're, what you're looking at for the rentals, for the affordable units that, that we're going to provide at the developer's expense with no requested subsidy from the county or any tax incentives. This is a developer, um, initiative. Traffic improvements. So as I said, the initial, um, site plan that we submitted was three hundred units, and because the TIA's take so long, that's what we submitted the TIA with. Now we're down to a hundred and twenty-eight units, and we have not requested to modify the requirements for the TIA from that upper number. So the improvements that the DOT and the WMPO have requested are at that higher unit count number. And the required mitigation is going to be to extend and construct multiple turn lanes, re-stripe and turn lanes on four twenty-one, and provide, um, modifications to the light. Here's just, uh, an illustrative plan of what those modifications would look like. And again, if you have specific traffic questions, our traffic engineer from Kim Lee Horn is here to answer those for you. Another question and concern that came up, Mr. Zappala, I know that you asked this at the agenda, and so, um, this is something that we've really been working on. There is not water and sewer at the property right now. Um, there is sewer available from Aqua down in Old Cape Cod, and there are two points of CFPUA water connections. We have already spoken to them, our tra, our, um, civil engineer has been working with them to extend those to our property line. So we will be extending those utilities to our property, which means that that's a capital improvement that the developer would be taking on for the county because then it's on the other side of the road and people can connect to it if they so desire to do that. Um, but that is a development cost and a project cost that my clients have already been investigating with those utility providers, um, as we go through. And again, um, our engineers here, if you have more specific questions about that. But it is definitely something that we were aware of and have been working on even, you know, in hopes of the rezoning, but we do not want to delay this project. Um, with that said, I know that another concern was another gas station was approved. I don't know that developer, I don't know that property owner. I do know that we're very close to signing a lease, um, with a national gas station convenience store chain, and our hope would be that as soon as we got, um, approval- store chain, and our hope would be that as soon as we got approval, if we got approval, that we would start breaking ground and developing these things. And so the development team is here if there are any more specific questions about that.
Ms. Schaefer, you've got just seven and a half minutes left. If there's some of the other people you want to talk to, Rob, about...
No, I'm good, she's doing fine.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. The factors for rezoning approval, so how are we consistent? We're classified as the community mixed-use, and as you can see, we are under that designation, and we're promoting a mix of retail, office, and medium-density residential. So everything that's called for, oh, I skipped one, sorry, revitalizing commercial corridors, promoting environmentally-friendly growth, and clustering development, and providing a range of housing types and opportunities. That's our compliance with the comprehensive plan, in addition to all of the other things in our application. And again, our factors and how we're consistent with the future land use map. Factors for the rezoning approval, what significant neighborhood changes. Again, water and sewer is available to the area, and we will be bringing that to our property. The Bowen Housing Needs Assessment and Update, clearly we need this product in this area. And then, you know, the mix of uses and the transition between the housing types and the commercial and residential. So we feel that we've met all of the factors for rezoning requests and compliance with the comprehensive plan. Staff recommended approval, Planning Board recommended approval. I do think we had a very good community meeting with the neighbors and have made the modifications that they requested, and so we would just ask the county commissioners to approve our rezoning request. And again, we're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Amy, for kind of addressing a number of the questions I had brought forward on Thursday. But amazingly, I have a few more.
No problem.
The water and sewer is huge. Thank you for addressing that, and thank you to the developers for making that a priority because of the water and sewer issues that we have. And I know the soils are not appropriate for septic.
Yes, sir.
Do you know if there's going to be an onsite manager for the one hundred and twenty-eight apartments?
I do not know if there will be a twenty-four-hour onsite manager, but yes, we will have a leasing and rental office.
The TIA, there was something there in one of your last slides, you don't need to go back, but it seemed to indicate that the TIA is not complete. Is it complete?
Yes, sir, it's complete.
It is, okay, great, thank you. So in that, you have, and I know you have to get a driveway permit as well, you have crosswalks for the driveways. I noted that in the packet that we got.
Yes, sir.
How does that going to work? My concern is, you know, you only, you have the section of sidewalks, which is, what, about a hundred feet, I guess, in the front there, and then you've got designated crosswalks going across the two driveways. How's that going to work when you've got fifty-five mile-per-hour traffic pulling off of Carolina Beach Road and right into those driveways?
Sure, if I can...
How are you going to make that safe?
Let me pull that up for you. We are installing a turn lane, as you can see, so the anticipation, and I'll look to the engineers if I say something wrong, but the anticipation would be that deceleration lane, so people would turn, you know, pull into the deceleration lane, slow down, and then turn into the project.
Yeah, and anybody who's in the crosswalk there, watch out.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can defer to the engineers or the WMPO on that if you'd like a more specific answer.
That'd be great, Amy, thanks.
Sure.
Just say your name and let's tell them who you're with.
Good evening, Jerry Potter, Ramy Kemp Associates. You are correct, so there would be a turn lane installed by the developer for that southbound to turn into the site, and whenever you would redesign the signal, so you would provide, you know, pit crossings and safe pit crossings with that signal redesign. So you would not have pedestrians crossing against that opposing traffic. They'll be going concurrently with the traffic when you install that pit signal.
Well, maybe I'm confused, and thank you, Jerry, for doing that. I thought that the crosswalks were going, cutting across the driveways, so going along Carolina Beach Road. Are you saying there's going to be a crosswalk across the intersection?
No, correct. So what you were saying was you would not have, I may have misunderstood your comment, so when you were having the vehicles that were turning southbound to turn into the site, correct, they would be slowing down, and you'd have a crosswalk right there. So when you have the signal be redesigned, you would make sure that those crosswalks were properly placed, so that you'd have good sight distance with those southbound vehicles that were in that right turn lane. They would be decelerating before they would turn right.
The same thing's true for the southbound driveway that's to be developed as well, because you'll be able to enter in as well as exit out that way.
Correct. There will be a right-in, right-out, correct.
And you don't see that, again, the traffic that goes along there, especially when they've got a green light and they're hurrying to get down to Carolina Beach for their beautiful summer stay, your anticipation is that they will slow down and carefully pull in?
Correct.
Right, I see. Thank you, Jerry. What is the linear footage, Amy, along Carolina Beach Road? I'm sorry, Jerry, you probably know that more than...
Hey, Alex Kimbrel with Kimley Horn, Site Civil.
Thanks.
The linear feed along Carolina Beach Road is approximately eight hundred feet.
Eight hundred feet.
And I will say that, just to piggyback on what Jeremy was mentioning before, so we have an exclusive acceleration/deceleration lane, and then we also have a landscape strip on the backup curb, so that sidewalk will not be installed directly behind the backup curb. So there will be some sort of cushion there to provide protection for those pedestrians traveling along the road.
See, but the sidewalk we're talking about will just extend the eight hundred feet?
That's right.
And does it connect to anything?
It does not.
So we call it an orphan sidewalk? I mean, I'm sorry, that's a joke.
No, no, so it's a good question, and it's something that comes up quite often. In fact, that same Rotary meeting that Judge Corpening was talking about, somebody asked about sidewalks on Market Street. So the hope is that as developers come through, they dedicate right-of-way for multi-use path or install sidewalks, so that then eventually it does connect to something. So the Bayat property that was just approved had a requirement for a sidewalk, so we would connect to that if it was ever built. And then hopefully, as things redevelop, they are also required to put in sidewalk. And then should the county decide to fund sidewalk or a multi-use path, as Ms. Roth said, that that's a consideration that the county is looking at, then the county has less to, you know, pay for, because there are already strips that are installed and the maintenance is to be required. So right now, it is a sidewalk to nowhere, but the hope is that that's the first installment of a multi-use path or a green light trail.
Standing. I noted in our packet, too, that we had wetlands on five acres of the property. Can you show me where that is?
Yep. That's back at the Stormwater Pond. So it is back in the Stormwater Pond area, and that's why we moved on the top left. And that's the reason that the stormwater was moved to that area. We had initially looked at doing an amenity pond in between the buildings and something a little fancy with a walking trail, but after the wetlands delineation, the Stormwater Pond was moved up there after a little bit of additional engineering.
Thank you. And the TIA indicated six thousand two hundred and forty-eight trips per day going there.
Yeah.
And you also noted several times that this is, you know, nearly at capacity. I know that we've approved projects just north of this, where the comment is that the Carolina Beach Road is already at capacity.
Sure.
So there seems to be a little bit of a, I don't know, it seems almost like a game of, you know, which section, which hundred yards of Carolina Beach, which is counted at what time of the year, and, okay, good, we've got that, it was nearly at capacity as opposed to capacity. I don't think there's a person who lives in New Hanover County who doesn't agree that Carolina Beach Road, both south as north, is over capacity, or, excuse me, at capacity. I know you don't like that word, "over."
Sure.
It's at capacity. I know, Amy, you're wonderful, I know you've advised your clients here. How do you justify adding another six thousand two hundred and forty-eight trips on a road that is clearly jammed at this point?
So I can have Jeremy come up and talk about the numbers and the data, and what traffic impact analysis say, and if you would like me to do that, I'm happy to do that. But let me start with, I live in this section of the county. I am a county resident, I live down there, I drive it every day. My daughter went to Murray Middle School. God, I hope she's not watching, she hates when I talk about her. And so I'm familiar with the intersection at Veterans Park and where all of that goes. What I will say about this project, first, is it's unique in its location. So where I live, if I want to go to Mayfair, I go out the back of my development and I go up Myrtle Grove Road. So here, if I want to go to Mayfair or that end of the county, I am right at the intersection to go to Myrtle, you know, to Myrtle Grove Road and use that to get to that area of the county. When I took my daughter to school, I would come down this way, I would come back Myrtle Grove Road, I would go upriver, and I would go the back way into the schools, so that I didn't have to sit at that intersection. So I do know that there is traffic. I also know that we are mitigating our traffic at this intersection, and that's what's called for under the comprehensive plan and all of your zoning ordinances. Another major factor I think is important in the traffic counts is, as much as I like our tenant that we're hoping to lease up, I don't think anybody is going to come down to this area just to go to that gas station. And that's where the majority of the numbers are coming from in the traffic impact analysis. Our reduction in the unit count, and again, that's more appropriate for a traffic impact analysis if you have specific questions, but you can see in the analysis that the majority of the trips are generated through the gas station. And just as we all know, as you said, it's people that are going to Carolina Beach anyway and are stopping in for something. It's not really extra trips on the road that are coming just to use our convenience store.
Except for the hundred and twenty-eight units.
Correct, but that is a very small part of the increased traffic. It's not that full number.
And each one of those six thousand two hundred and forty-eight trips represent people who are, you know, a bunch is what they call pass-by stops, or I've got the term wrong there.
Yes, no, I think that's the term, yes, sir.
Yeah, each one is somebody pulling off and then having to pull back in to traffic, which has an impact on the traffic flow, et cetera, especially when we hit, again, our summer months, when we're talking about tens of thousands of people using that corridor down in there. I note your optimism, that is, but it's ironic that you talked about in your travels that you've had to do workarounds, and because you're a native, or near a native, you know those other back routes, et cetera.
Sure.
One of the issues that we talk about with all of our development here is connectivity.
Yes.
You described to me how you'd get to connectivity when you've put a fence around the entire thing.
Sure, so, you know, one of the main concerns of the neighbors was that they did not want us to connect to their cul-de-sac. That was not a recommendation or requirement by planning staff or the planning board, so based on that, we did not include it. If that's something that the county commissioners would like to see, and if that's a requirement that you put on us, then, you know, that's something that we would consider. But based on the feedback that we've been given at this time, that's just not how the plan developed.
I see. And when you use the term environmentally-friendly growth, you know, in your plan, which part of this is environmentally-friendly?
Yes, sir, we've saved, I get it, we've saved the trees at front. We have structured the stormwater in the wetlands area so that it's, you know, an appropriate place. We've agreed to additional tree saves unless they're directly affected by amenities and essential site improvements. So I think all of those are environmentally-friendly and clustering of development at nodes.
And in your, the affordable housing, I think you went pretty quick through it, but I saw on a one-bedroom apartment, we have one thousand eighteen dollars, I believe, oh, I got it right, for a one-bedroom.
Yes, sir.
That is in the eighty percent AMI, correct?
Yes, and if somebody, that's, yes.
Good. We've approved a couple of projects just recently where we have developers who have figured out how to deliver a four hundred to four hundred and fifty-dollar one-bedroom apartment. Granted, they're using low-income housing tax credits, but there is a way to do it.
Sure is.
And to me, that is truly affordable and/or workforce housing.
Yes, sir. And if I may...
Sure, please.
My client is actually exploring those possibilities at this time, but that funding is unreliable. You're not sure if it's going to come, and the process is a lot more stringent and takes a lot longer than we have under our current contracts. And so my client is committed to further exploring affordable housing opportunities, but at this time, without subsidies, as a developer-offered project, this is what we can offer.
I see. And your client is a local developer or...
No, sir.
From out of state?
Yes, sir.
I see. Has he had any other developments in New Hanover County?
No, sir, this is our first in New Hanover County.
I see.
Amy, I have just a couple of quick questions.
Please, no, no, take it away.
I was letting you finish, you've probably covered everything.
Yes, ma'am.
Just a couple of things about the infrastructure. Do you know how far you're having to bring the infrastructure down to that development?
Yeah, let me...
And do you know what investment you're having to make, you know, the cost of that, yes?
I think that we've had initial conversations with the authority. Let me bring Alex up to answer those.
He could probably answer my next question, too.
Yeah, so for the water to be extended down Carolina Beach Road, that is actually eight hundred feet. I'd like to retract my last statement about the property frontage, that was three hundred feet. I said eight hundred, but the water line is eight hundred.
Thank you.
Exactly.
Eight hundred feet? And what is the cost of that infrastructure?
The cost implications have not been negotiated with...
Do you have any idea?
I don't, not at this time.
Well, it can't be cheap, it's an investment in the infrastructure.
It is an investment, absolutely. I know it's eight-inch PVC and...
And I know, you know, the goal, I think, of, well, what I'd like to see is, you know, CFPUA all the way down to Pleasure Island, down that corridor. So I do like that extension. My other question was about the traffic, and I'm certainly very familiar with that area as well, and that intersection is hokey, for no better word as it is. And I do like the additional lanes. Do you foresee the traffic being a dedicated turn as far as with an arrow turn, or will they, does that make sense what I'm asking, into that development?
Yeah, so when the signal will be redesigned, that's when that would all be determined. So that would be part of the process moving forward, is determining exactly how that signal would operate efficiently and safely. So that'd be part of the signal design that would be done at a later time.
Yeah, I mean, I think there certainly needs to be some redevelopment of that traffic area there, it is very awkward as it is. So, okay, that was my question on that. And do you know if the traffic counts in that actual area of intersection is at capacity or the traffic? I understand that you are less than the traffic maximum.
Correct.
Did I ask that right?
Correct, I believe you asked that correctly. So, correct, so the traffic was not at maximum at that intersection.
Chairman?
I am one person that would not agree that Carolina Beach Road is over capacity. So there is one person out there that wouldn't think that, that would be me. I heard our staff say to use the word "node," and I know that part of our goals with our comprehensive plan is to develop nodes, where you have a cluster of commercial services, businesses, that would allow individuals not to have to get on the road and travel too far to get to the services they need. I know that there would be three gas stations here. I would hope to see some other type of stores or amenities pop up in that area as well. Looking at the available land that's there, there's not a whole, whole lot left in that area that could be redeveloped or developed, but I think the node concept would definitely be a good thing. You know, I appreciate the fact that some of these would be dedicated towards workforce housing, although the number is quite high when it comes to the rental amount. I know the three-bedroom unit is, for me, a mortgage payment for, well, it used to be a mortgage payment anyway, because mortgage payments have definitely gone up with the cost of housing, but to make things some... Uh, but to make things somewhat more affordable, I think is a, is a good thing for those that would be looking to live in that particular area. Uh, so I appreciate that aspect. Those are my comments, Mr. Chairman.
No one has signed up to speak against, so at this point, we'll close the public hearing. Any conversation, wait us?
Mr., oh, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Here's a thought that I have, and this is, you know, kind of an overarching thought. It has to do with, I know our planning department has said to us that they're, they don't have any policy on the, uh, for commercial growth and the fact that, uh, you know, putting three gas stations, we're literally right on top of each other, right in that entire intersection there. We have, as Commissioner Barfield rightfully pointed out, dwindling amount of acreage, uh, along, especially along, uh, Carolina Beach Road. There still is some. Thank you, Rebecca. I know sent us out a map that showed the available parcels that are there, but it's definitely decreasing. And I, I believe as a commission, uh, that we need to be intentional about what we want this corridor to look like. Uh, you know, taking, you know, one of the major intersections along Carolina Beach Road and putting in three gas stations and three convenience stores. I know, you know, sometimes we're very highly critical of the lack of zoning that happened and resulted in Carolina Beach Road, especially closer, you know, from Monkey Junction all the way down to, uh, you know, the downtown area there. And we're still recovering from that. I think that there's a, a moment to take a pause and consider, is this the, uh, the type of development that we want along that corridor? Three gas stations, as we mentioned in, uh, on last Thursday at agenda briefing. We don't have, or we could not identify another area in the county where we clustered three gas stations or convenience stores, uh, in one place. I believe we can do better. And, uh, again, going off of what Commissioner Barfield was just saying, I would love to see and love to approve, uh, retail a- and commercial along there that indeed did take traffic off the road. And so those people who live there and add connectivity so that people didn't even have to get onto Carolina Beach Road. That's the kind of development I think that we deserve and as we're going to be faced with, as there's less and less of it to rezone and to develop. I know that's a, a large comment. Thank you every time.
Yes, sir.
That, that's not quite exactly what I said.
Hmm.
Uh, you know, I don't think that we're in the business of picking and choosing what industry comes and where they locate. Um, I think that would be a bad precedent to, for us to say, you can only have X, Y, and Z, two of these or two of those. I think that the private sector, the, you know, and, 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 and people that use those services will determine what they want in those areas. Uh, and it's not our land. The land belongs to private individuals. Um, um, we're, we can rezone stuff, but it's not our land. I know people use the phrase, we gotta protect our green space, but it's not our green space. That land belonged to somebody that owns it. And the county doesn't own that land, so I don't want us to, you know, have the wrong thought process. But my conversation was around developing those, but those things happen over time. You know, where I live, uh, there's a, a Walgreens on one corner and, uh, CVS on the other. I know the city of Wilmington was trying to limit this Walgreens from being right next to the CVS, so they bought land across the street. And for me, it's a, a convenient factor that, because I use both. Uh, there's a gas station right down Seventeenth Street that I go to, but there's also one off Bragg Drive that I go to. They're both convenient for me. And I look at the location here, they're on opposite sides of the road. So you have traffic going to Carolina Beach that would definitely benefit from having a gas station on their way home, as opposed to having to make a left turn to go through that one gas station on that, on that one particular corner. So I look at things from more of a convenience standpoint and, and, um, but I, I don't want to be into the business of picking and choosing, um, how many Burger Kings can come to our community and where they should be located. Uh, that's for the private sector to do.
And if we were, we should have started it a long time ago.
Yeah. Commissioner Barfield, I, I think that, you know, my objection there was, uh, three gas stations, certainly not two. We just approved, uh, a month ago, another one on the same side, you know, less than a few hundred feet from where we're putting this one. That, that's what I was referring to.
So, um, just a comment from, from my thoughts, um, the market will dictate itself. I mean, it, if, if they want to be able to have three gas stations i- in one area and whoever is the best business person will, um, come out on top. But my thoughts are, there certainly needs to be something on the southbound lane for gas because, um, I think a lot of folks get caught in that traffic going down to the beach and they would pull in and fill their tank up before they get, um, on that area. Just a couple of things, um, for me, um, I think that, I do think that, that my comments, uh, earlier already about the traffic intersection there, it certainly, um, could use to be reworked in that area. So I'm, I'm glad to see that. Um, and there are, um, as, as Ms. Schaefer stated, between, um, Carolina Beach and Monkey Junction, just the one Willa Glenn apartment complex that is true rentals for people who can't afford, quite frankly, to buy a home. So I do think we need to see, um, some more rental. And I think your numbers, um, on Willa Glenn is probably higher than that. I just moved my son out of there and I think he was paying fifteen hundred for a one-bedroom. So it's terribly expensive, um, in that area. Um, so, uh, I like the idea that there, uh, would be true apartment rentals and not, um, uh, for sale or something that would turn into a short-term rental. It could be long-term, um, housing for those folks in the area. Um, I, um, I do like that there's a, a section that's affordable and, and you did not ask for money from anybody for it. Uh, so that's important to me. Um, I like the infrastructure improvement. Uh, and, and I like that you saved the trees. I mean, that's very important to me. Um, and I like the amenities on the property. So for some of, many of those factors, um, I, I could be in favor of the project. Um, but particularly for having, uh, a true rental in that area, I think is important. I have folks that work for me right now who can't find a place to stay.
Just because I haven't spoken, I want to commend the applicant. I went through this entire submission prior to today's hearing and the application and the process that was followed was clean and well-done. It made it very easy for me to do my work and to come to my determination that this project should be rezoned as requested. Thank you.
You know, e- everything that comes to us is always something that, that we can pick it apart. But I also know that every apartment complex I go ride by is in the process of being built. When they plant the last azalea in front of it, there's a car parked in every parking spot. It's, uh, sold out. So I, I feel like I could too. But before we proceed with the vote, I'd like to invite the applicant to the podium. Based on board discussion and items presented during the public hearing, would you like to withdraw your petition or proceed with the vote?
We'd like to proceed tonight, please, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I move to approve the proposed rezoning that finally be consistent with the purpose in attendance of the comprehensive plan because the proposed density and housing type is within the recommendation of the commu- community makes use place type and the commercial development acts as an appropriate transition between the highway corridor and residential development. I also find approval for the rezoning request is reasonable in the public interest because the project provides interconnectivity and housing diversity and an appropriate density to act as a transition between existing commercial and residential development. An additional voluntary condition by the applicant also ensures workforce housing affordability for ten percent of the units for a period of fifteen years. And then there is a multitude of conditions, one through eight, that I would also submit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Do you hear that, Kim? Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Item, uh, item sixteen, request by Linda Cockman with Rising Stars of North Carolina LLC. Applicant on behalf of San Fiddler Properties LLC, property owner for the use of a childcare center at the approximately, uh, point eight-two acre parcel located at three-twenty Van Dyke Drive, soon I-1 light industrial. This is a quasi judicial hearing. Before the hearing is open, the deputy county attorney will provide an overview of the hearing procedures.
Thank you, Chairman Robin Bark.
You're welcome.
This is an SUP, which is a quasi judicial hearing. If you recall, for quasi judicial hearings, the board must find four elements, um, as finding as facts, and they must be clearly stated on the record. Those four findings must include, this will not materially endanger the public health or safety. This does not meet all requirement, required conditions and specifications of the UDO. This will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or budding property. And this will be in harmony with the area in which it is located in general conformity with the comprehensive land use for New Hanover County. If the Board of C- of Commissioners determines that any of the above elements cannot be made on this evidence, that alone may be the basis for your denial. The Board of Commissioners only needs to find that the evidence does not support one element, not that it does not have to support all of the elements. Um, there's been plenty of court decisions that say what is relevant and competent evidence? That would be testimony through experts, testimony through people who have standing. You can make those inquiries, um, when they come to testify. They have been sworn in. It is not necessarily based on opinion. If that is a neighbor of the property and that you find that they have standing, they would be the one that knows their property, not that they would be an expert. So that opinion could qualify, but not the neighbors down the street, for example. You may, um, once you find the people who have standing, those may, those persons, excuse me, may cross-examine others or object to testimony. That usually doesn't happen in this forum, but wanted to let you know that. You have the opportunity to inquire if you have enough information and you can contai- can table this for additional evidence or experts that might be needed by either party. Um, letting you know that those are the standards. I'm here and available to help you with any of it that you should be. This is not your first SUP, but wanted to set that out for anyone who has come and presented and might not be aware. Thank you.
Thank you. Is everyone sworn in? Okay. All right, we'll, we'll first hear a presentation from staff, then the applicant, and any opponents will each be allowed fifteen minutes for their presentation altogether and an additional five minutes of rebuttal.
Thank you, Chair and members of the board. This is a request for a special use permit for a childcare center in a light industrial zoning district. As a special use permit, conditions may be applied to the request to ensure compliance with the required conclusion. The site is located on the corner of Amsterdam Way and Van Dyke Drive in Dutch Square Industrial Park. It was originally zoned R-15 in the early nineteen seventies. The property was rezoned to I-1 light industrial in nineteen seventy-nine for the development of an industrial complex. From the aerial photography, we can see the existing structure and the intersection of Amsterdam Way and Van Dyke Drive. Here is an aerial photo of the site with images of the property from different angles. You can see a side area to be fenced for children, the front entrance of the building, and a cell tower behind the building. Childcare centers are permitted in most commercial districts, but require the additional steps of the SUP in residential and industrial districts to ensure it's appropriately evaluated for the specific site and surrounding uses. The childcare center will serve up to sixty children aged zero to twelve years old. This request will allow the existing childcare center at sixty-seven forty-three Amsterdam Way to expand the number of children they can accommodate. The existing commercial structure will be converted for the proposed use and a fenced-out area will be added. No other changes are proposed for the site. The existing driveway access on Van Dyke will be used. This is the applicant's concept plan. Uh, here you can see Van Dyke and Amsterdam Way. Here's the existing building, proposed parking, and area to be fenced for the children. As shown here, there are three STIP roadway projects nearby, the details of which are in your staff report. The proposed development would increase traffic by approximately thirty-nine AM and thirty-seven PM peak hour trips. Located within the boundary of areas classified as employment center place types in the comprehensive plan, the types of use is encouraged to include commercial uses designed to serve the needs of the employment center. Staff has created preliminary findings of fact for each of the four conclusions required to be reached to approve a special use permit. These preliminary findings and conclusions are based solely on the information provided to date prior to any information or testimony in support or opposition to the request. For conclusion one, the preliminary staff findings generally address utilities, fire protection, access, environmental features, and traffic. For conclusion two, the findings address compliance of various ordinance requirements, including dimensional standards. For conclusion three, the findings address existing site conditions and lane uses in the vicinity. And conclusion four addresses compatibility with the surrounding area and compatibility with the comprehensive plan. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff from New Hanover County Engineering and Stormwater and the WMPO are here to answer any questions that come up regarding engineering and traffic. The applicant is here and is prepared a presentation.
Anyone? Okay, thank you. Um, the applicant's presentation, we have up to fifteen minutes altogether.
Thank you. My name's Linda Catchman and I am the owner of Rising Stars of North Carolina. And we currently have a center, Rising Stars of Wilmington, that's located at sixty-seven forty-three Amsterdam Way. Um, we, is the presentation coming up? Or do I need to proceed anything? I can go through it. She showed most of the, um, aerials of how the structure would be. But, um, on the map, you would see that we are just a half a mile around the corner from our current center. And this would allow us to build and move our school-age students and our four-year-olds over to this location, um, freeing up about sixty spaces, um, at our current center so that we can allow more children into our current center at a zero to three years of age. Um, this would allow more society children. Um, we currently have over three hundred on our waiting list. It allows for a benefit for parents who possibly may have siblings. Um, we, we looked at some sites off of Market Street, but with the traffic, trying to come from our location to another location to pick up siblings would create additional time spans. So if they were to leave our center and be able to go pick up a sibling from this location, it would be two minutes down the road. It also would allow to create eight to ten more employment positions, um, within our company.
Anybody got any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
In the words of, from the movie Jerry Maguire, you had me at hello. Um, you know, I recognize the need for daycare centers and more spaces. Uh, one of my daughters just had a child and, and most places have at least a year-long waiting list. When you got a newborn, you can't wait a whole year. Uh, you know, you gotta figure something out pretty quick. Um, but, uh, most of your good quality centers here in our community are, definitely have a long waiting list. And, you know, for me, daycare centers are part of economic development when it comes to job creation and making sure that folks that are going to work have somewhere to take their children as well. So I appreciate you all willing to not only have a center, but also to expand and, and create greater capacity.
Yes, thank you.
There's no one that's signed up against, so, uh, unless you have anything else, we'll close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion from the board?
Mr. Chair, if I, I might, I, I have to, uh, a hundred percent agree with Commissioner Barfield. Uh, we, we have a need for, um, childcare facilities in New Hanover County and I'm glad to see one coming. I know folks who can't, ladies who can't get to work because they can't find daycare. So that's, uh, it's quite a tragedy, but, uh, certainly, um, uh, uh, I can vote in favor of childcare facility.
Anyone else?
Ditto.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the permit as the board finds.
Wait, 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 wait. Do you agree with the findings, ma'am, so far? Okay, sorry, go ahead.
I make a motion to approve the permit as the board finds that the application for the special use permit meets the four required conclusions based on the findings of fact included in the staff report.
Second. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
We do have someone signed up to speak on the public comments.
We do have someone signed up to speak on the public comments?
Do I just go ahead and get started?
Oh, yeah.
I'm setting my timer so that I don't go over. Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board, for allowing me to speak with you tonight about Island Creek Ecosystem, an imperiled biodiversity hotspot.
If you could state your name and address.
I'm sorry. Andy Wood. I'm Director of Coastal Plain Conservation Group, representing tonight the board and members of Coastal Plain. We are, as you know, on the coastal plain of North America. And it is recognized now by Conservation International and other organizations as a biodiversity hotspot, which is an ecoregion supporting fifteen hundred different plant species and an ecoregion that has lost more than seventy percent of its natural habitats. I'm not here tonight to disparage development or to ask you to vote against development. I'm here to provide information about consequences of development in an ecoregion dominated by hydric, otherwise known as wet soils. And I'm not going to necessarily focus on the word wetland, which the Supreme Court of the United States just ruled against with EPA. Let's call wetlands what they are, wet areas dominated by poorly to very poorly draining soils. Specifically, Island Creek is this area in northeast New Hanover County. It encompasses parts of northeast New Hanover and southeast Pender County. It's one of the last best eco-regions within southeast North Carolina. The land use plan has designated it as compatible for community mixed use, wherein in two thousand and six, it was an area believed to be reserved for wetland protection. The Island Creek area is predominantly composed of hydric soils, soils that form under conditions of saturation and flooding. So they are wet areas. They support a great diversity of plants and wildlife, including orchids, our beloved flytrap, other pitcher plants. And it's an area that supports eight of our nine freshwater and land turtles. This is what's happening to the area right now. This is what will be a consequence of that development is flooding. This is a house under construction at this time, surrounded by water. The image was taken on thirty-one May, just several days after a rainfall, and it's still holding water on the ground surface. This is Hurricane Florence. This is the consequence of Hurricane Florence. So my point is, I would like for the planning department and this group to consider hydric soils in the planning process. And we have these requests here, but I'm over time, so I'll let you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You have anything? Ms. Coakley? Chris?
Mr. Chairman, I will offer for the benefit of the board, and Commissioner Scalise mentioned the community endowment, and that prompted me to think of a meeting that Wanda and Jordan and Lisa and I were in at ten o'clock this morning to remind the board what it created when the hospital transitioned on February first of two thousand and twenty-one. The new number of what the board created at the time was an endowment specific for New Hanover County. The one hundred and nine, one hundred and ninety-nine land miles that is your territory, an endowment that is worth one point three 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 billion dollars. The second-to-last cash flow to the endowment happened last week or the week before. There's one small one still to come, two years effectively from February the first, but you created a one point three 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 billion-dollar endowment. We were reminded of not only the size and scale of that this morning, but the uniqueness of what you did. So I just thought important to share that with you and like Commissioner Zappala about Mr. Scalise of your comment.
Thanks, sir. Yes, sir.
I want to commend our county manager and his team for putting together a great budget. Want to commend our board for passing the budget tonight. We now have a budget moving forward. Sure, the state won't beat our record, the feds won't beat our record, but we continue to do great things for our community and looking forward to another great year.
Jim?
I just wanted to, as a point of personal privilege, say hi, Boris. Hi, Louis. I'm so glad to be working on your behalf, as well as the other kids of New Hanover County.
Rob?
I'd just like to say again, thank you to all the commissioners and congratulations to the staff, our county manager, Eric, Michelle, and Crystal, too, for putting together what I feel is a wonderful budget that will serve the citizens and indeed improve the quality of life and continue on what we've been doing and building on what we've been doing. And I look very much forward to the next series of disbursements from the endowment, which I know is coming hopefully soon.
Okay. If nobody's got anything else, this meeting's over.